Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for January 17th, 2012. I will officially call this meeting to order. We did meet prior to, right now, for a special meeting. I'll move right to our closed session. Is there any reportable action from our closed session?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council, no, there was not. And it should be noted that Item A, which was Conference of Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, was not discussed after all.
Thank you very much.
Can we go back to Number Five for roll call?
Yes, we can. I was actually going to go to roll call next, so we will do that and make it official that we're all still here.
Thank you.
Convening the regular Town Council meeting, Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Dornbacher.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite all of you to please stand and join us in the pledge.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, for many of you that aren't familiar with how we do this, we're going to have a little bit of a departure, and we have a series of other hats that we wear, so we're going to officially recess to the Yountville Housing Authority Annual Meeting at this time. And the record can reflect that all the board members are present.
Members are present, yes.
So we will move on to public speaking. I think we can pass on-
Public comment.
Public comment.
Yes. Is there any public?
I'm anticipating that for this particular session, we don't, I mean, you're welcome to bring up any items right now in public comment. We will still have our formal public comment portion to our regular council meeting, which is a little bit more traditional at the time, but if you would like to bring it up now under the Housing Authority, you are welcome to do so. So with that set of parameters, I think I've kept everybody in their seat for now, at least. But I want to make sure that if anyone wants to speak to the Alpha Housing Authority, that you can do that now. If not, we'll move on to the election of officers.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is election of officers, and the Housing Authority bylaws call for a Chair and Vice Chair, and typically the Mayor and Vice Mayor are the Chair and Vice Chair of this group, and staff is requesting that council make that appointment.
Is there-
(Audio loss.)
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Move on to the consent calendar for the minutes of the May 3rd, 2011 meeting, and the Housing Authority Annual Financial Report. Is there any action on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Any reports? No public hearings, no schedules with that? I will welcome a motion to adjourn from the Housing Authority.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See how this works? Just two more times and we'll be set. You never know, though. We are now going to recess from the Yountville Housing Authority and open the meeting for the Yountville Finance Authority Annual Meeting.
And the roll call, all members are present?
Thank you very much. The next is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously. Again, there is a public comment opportunity, and the same suggestion applies. Okay. Thank you. Let's move on now to Item Five, election of officers.
Okay, again, election of officers. The Finance Authority requires that the President and Vice President be the Mayor and Vice Mayor, and the members of the Board are council members, and then it also has staff for the corresponding positions as Administrator, as Town Manager, Secretary Town Clerk, Treasurer-Controller as the Finance Director, and Legal Counsel as the Town Attorney, and staff is requesting that you make those motions.
I move that we elect the, all of the above-mentioned personnel, including the Town Council and the Mayor and Vice Mayor, to be a part of the Yountville Finance Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the motion. That passes. Moving on to consent for the Finance Authority Annual Financial Report. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. No regular items, financial authority reports, future agenda items. So with that, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we will adjourn from the Yountville Finance Authority, and we will open the meeting for the Yountville Parking Authority Annual Meeting.
Yes, and all members are present for roll call?
Thank you. Again, there is a public comment portion, and again, we will hold off on that. Again, election of officers.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, election of officers. The Parking Authority has designated positions that correspond with Town Council and Town Staff, and the Chair, Vice Chair, and Board of Directors are the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Administrator is Town Manager, Secretary is Town Clerk, Treasurer-Controller is Finance Director, and Legal Counsel is Town Attorney, and staff is requesting that you make those appointments as recommended.
Is there a motion for such appointment?
I move that such appointments be approved by the council.
Second.
By the Parking Authority.
By the Parking Authority.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Technicality, but-
Sorry.
That's all right. Again, we have no other items to address on this agenda, so-
Back to the consent calendar, please.
Oh, yes, the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar for the Parking Authority.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for that catch. Now, we can hear a motion for adjournment from the Parking Authority.
Move to adjourn the Parking Authority.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Just rolling right along, folks. Now, if that isn't what you were all here for, you're welcome to stay. And we will go on to Item 10. So this is where we are, calling for a closed session report. We've already acknowledged that there was no reportable action from our earlier closed session. With that, we'll move on to Item 11, which is the adoption of tonight's regular Town Council meeting agenda. Is there any, we do have a couple proposed changes to that agenda. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes. Item 15A and Item 15C have been request for each applicant to be withdrawn. So 15A is the PAC Blues item, and 15C is the Catterell and Appeal. And both have submitted requests to withdraw their items this evening.
So just so everybody understands, the Pacific Blues hearing is off our agenda, and also the appeal for variance denial hearing, the property of 1922 Oak Circle has also been withdrawn, so we're not addressing either of those issues at all this evening. With those amendments to the agenda, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor of the modified agenda?
Aye.
That passes also. Now, the real public comment portion. I invite any member of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not listed on our agenda. So if you are here to speak on the application that we will be addressing in a few minutes, we'll reserve your comments at that time. But if there is an item that you'd like to bring up that is not listed, now would be the time. And I know we do have at least one person, and I invite Wallace Berry to come up. He is a resident of our California Veterans Home, and is going to represent the Allied Council with a couple announcements. So, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Town Council and Mayor Dunbar. Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. I wanted to start with the fact that we are now in one of our election periods. I talked to John a bit about this. We, at the home, I think most of you know, we have a legislative and an executive organization. The elections also shift from one group to the other. This is the elective year, which means that the Chairman and the Vice Chair are duly elected for a two-year term. Next year will be delegated, which is our legislative group, and that will be also for a two-year period. Having said that, the election, the nominations have been held over the last couple of weeks. We have a fairly competitive race for, I guess most of you know, Mr. Olson's seat as Chair. No comment on who I think is going to win, okay? But there are two participants in addition to Mr. Olson. On the Vice Chair, there's really only one, so there's no mystery there. In fact, the gentleman is sitting in the audience behind me, but we'll leave it at that. So that election will be next Wednesday. So by this time, more or less next week, we'll know, count the results, and we'll get those to you. In addition to the election, I wanted to comment on a couple of things that really came up in your closed discussion, since I was here for part of it. One is that we have been trying to make progress, and I think we have a small amount of progress going, on an outdoor games area. It would be up by the Member Services Building, and it would include things like croquet, bocce ball, putting green, shuffleboard, and anything else we can fit in there. Now, this again is for that, as somebody expressed it eloquently, the somewhat older population at the home. It would be accessible, most of the games at least, for the handicap as well. So that I will keep you abreast of, but I think we're in the stage we're in, raising money and then getting the final plans drawn for it. So we should have something by the spring. The only other thing I would mention is that with a group here in the community, we've been looking at reviving the fishing pond, and there was at one time, up just below the hospital, a fishing pond, which was enjoyable to those who fish and that, but it's kind of gone to seed. So we're, again, looking for cooperation with a particular group here in town that are the, I guess, Fly Fisher Association. We'll see how that goes. That's going to take a little bit more time and effort, so I wouldn't expect much before summer on that. All right, there are many other things I could probably talk about, but I know there's a five-minute limit. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you again.
Thanks very much for representing the Allied Council tonight, Mr. Berry. Any other, yes, Mr. Warren.
I'd like to speak to an issue, Mr. Mayor and City Council, that affects voter registration. We recently received a letter saying that the County Registrar of Voters did not want to send any mail ballots, and we have all mailed ballots, as I understand, City of Yountville also has, to more than one address. So two other addresses that have historically been used will no longer be valid, and those people have to re-register. And you may or may not know, but we have two precincts at the home. It kind of goes at a diagonal, so that most of the residential homes for domiciliary, I have a hard time with that word, are on the north end, and those with higher care on the south end. So the two things occur. If we send, there's two problems right now. So that if all mail is sent to only one address, they don't know where you're living, and they don't know what precinct you're in, because that depends upon what building you're in. Is that, did I get that correct? So, at the Registrar of Voters, because I asked them once, they said, "Well, we know where the sections are." So when I went down there to change my registration once upon a time, they could put me in the right precinct, because they knew that I lived in Building D, and that somebody in that office has a list of their own that says, "Okay, that's in precinct to the north." The other big problem with this is that everybody who goes to higher care moves mainly from one precinct to the other precinct, and is, would be expected to register at a time when they would be not really best able to be thinking about things like, "What is my voter registration?" So it's like we're disenfranchising a great number of people who, because they move into higher levels of care, all of a sudden don't live in their precinct, can't vote. So our solution is to have one precinct. And we would like you to think about this, perhaps support us. And we haven't finished the process. We're going to talk about it soon at the Allied Council. I brought it to a member of the administration today, but it seems to me that, historically speaking, precincts are cut into a size about 700, so that Election Day happens reasonably smoothly. With a mail registration, it makes no difference. There are no special districts involved in the home in Yountville where it makes any difference. Sometimes it does, but not here, not now. So our solution seems to be to have just one precinct, so that in your adding up of the column on the day of election, you'd have 800 in there instead of 400 voters, you know, or whatever is the number. Wouldn't even be more numbers in the column. It'd just be a bigger number, but not more columns. So that's the, that's the, that's the issue. And we just received this about two weeks ago, and we'll be moving on. I don't know who I should talk to, or if there's somebody in the city that deals particularly with precincts and things like that, but we would like some support in that. Any questions?
No, and we're not really able to discuss it, because it is an item that's not agendized, but what I can tell you is, staff has heard your issue and your concern, and we know how to get in touch with you and also with the administration and the Allied Council, and we can potentially suggest the best people to reach out to. It isn't our authority, but we can certainly help you talk to the right people and-
Yeah, I understand. But we're all sitting here in the town, and we will discuss it at the Allied Council at their next meeting, and we could come back and discuss to you what their recommendation is, which I suspect will be along the lines of what I'm speaking to tonight.
Absolutely. And I'm sure staff can very easily give you contact information for the county and John Tudor.
I have John Tudor's card. Plan to talk to him about this and another matter in the near future, but I'm going to wait until we get this thing, somebody more than me to talk to him.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Are there any members of the public that would like to bring up any other issues? Seeing no others, I'll move on from the public comment portion and move to Item 13, which is our consent calendar. Monthly financial report for November 2011 and minutes from our December 6th, 2011 meeting. Is there any motion for action?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 14, presentations. And I get to call my own number on this one. This will be a presentation of my State of the Town Annual Review and Preview. And with that, "When I gave my State of the Town address last year, our local and national economic conditions were the focus of everyone's concern. That continues to be true and appears to be the new baseline for our decision-making and priority setting as elected leaders. Over several months, the Town Council worked with members of the community to adopt a five-year strategic plan, focusing on goals of financial health, enhanced communication, balancing the impacts of being an international travel destination, infrastructure improvements, and upgrading town operations. I'd like to address how I saw those goals play out in 2011 and what to expect moving forward. Thankfully, we have many notable achievements and moments to remember from last year. Evidence of our fiscal health came with a balanced budget and protection of core services, as well as when the town received an Award of Excellence by the Government Finance Officers Association for our comprehensive annual financial report. We also received a AA+ credit rating from Standard and Poor's. We added to fund balances for future capital projects, an emergency or rainy day fund, and to our public employees' benefits obligations. Improved communications stemmed from our updated and enhanced town website, a new e-notifier system that allows residents to select the news topics they'd like to be updated on, and our free participation on the community building website, nextdoor.com, which gives neighbors another way to interact. We also launched online bill payment to make it easier and greener for utility customers. I added reports from the Allied Council of our California Veterans Home to our regular Town Council meetings in order to expand our communication with our honorable servicemen and women who call Yountville home. Signs that Yountville is more than just a traveler's favorite locale include how the lobbies of our Community Center and Community Hall have transformed into the gallery, a home for area artists to share their work with the public. We host quarterly exhibits and receptions, partner with arts organizations for shows, literary forums, and art education. Thanks to the generosity of a most gracious longtime visitor to our town, we became home to Chaos Pamplona, a world-class sculpture by artist Jed Novat. Combined with our ever-growing Sculpture Art Walk, and thanks in no small part to a team of dedicated residents and business owners, Yountville's becoming known for our art, as well as our delicious food and wine, what I like to call Michelin stars and masterpieces. After two years of coordination with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, residents Sean Larkin and I were able to bring to town a special World Trade Center Steel Memorial, located at our Community Center Plaza, and representing the lives and memories we honored during a ceremony on September 11th, 2011, the 10th anniversary of the terror attacks in New York, Pennsylvania, and Washington, DC. Longtime resident of Yountville and world-renowned restaurateur Thomas Keller became a Chevalier of the French Legion of Honor for his excellence in French cuisine. One of only three Americans bestowed this recognition. We are fortunate to witness firsthand his pursuit of culinary perfection here in Yountville. We welcomed U.S. Secretary of Transportation Ray LaHood, who came to town to see our recently-built Yountville Mile, the first segment of a 44-mile bicycle and pedestrian pathway system through the Napa Valley. During his visit, he commented on the breathtaking beauty of our community. We continue to be a global tourist destination. Our visitor-based local economy continues to trend in a positive direction, with our restaurants, lodging properties, wine tasting rooms, and retailers posting strong and, in some cases, record earnings. Being heavily reliant on visitors for our revenues does create challenges for us. In some neighborhoods, that continues to be parking. In others, it's noise. Still, in others, it's both. We continue to work with our business community to reduce the negative impacts on our residents. In 2011, the Town Council ended a decade of town subsidy of water and sewer services by restructuring water and wastewater rates. Some questioned why such a change was necessary, especially given our strong local economy. We faced the fact that we could not continue to commit a growing amount of public funds to pay a portion of people's water and sewer bills. We also needed to establish a long-term funding source for system maintenance in the coming years. Numerous town-wide projects were completed in 2011, including neighborhood street resurfacing, installations, installation of lights at the bocce courts, community swimming pool improvements, new LED efficient streetlights, utility undergrounding, and updating of the town's land use and design regulations by our Zoning and Design Review Board, working with the Town Council and Town Staff. Last year, we said goodbye to some well-known businesses, including McGrath's Garage, Hotel Luca, and Cantina de Piero Restaurant. We also welcome newcomers to town like Kohler Chocolates, Kelly's Fuel and Provisions, our reinvented Hotel Yountville, and next week, Redwood. Chikyo, or Sikyo, formerly Gordon's Cafe, is still expected soon. I want to recognize the amazing volunteer effort that is a major part of the fabric of our community. Many events we enjoyed would not have been possible without the generosity of our friends and neighbors. The 34th Yountville Days Parade and Festival, the Second Annual Town Wellness Fair and Kids' Day, the Children's Garden in Yountville Park, sponsored by the Yountville Kiwanis Club, Miss Jenny's Farmer's Market at the Community Center Plaza, Community Thanksgiving Dinner Service, sponsored by local service organizations and private citizens, an Enhanced Festival of Lights, and the inaugural Napa Valley Film Festival. The lives of two of our finest community volunteers were memorialized in the naming of the Community Center Reading Room after former Councilmember Lou Jefferson, and the dedication of Miss Audrey's children's book, Nook, in honor of Audrey Dutton. We celebrated the reopening of the pedestrian pathway along Hopper Creek, adjacent to the historic oak tree, once again offering the natural beauty of our townwide pathway system without interruption. The community continues to rally in support of Yountville Elementary School. Initial outreach by town leaders led to the establishment of the Yountville School Foundation, which has continued to work with the Napa Valley Unified School District to protect our local school and discuss options like class expansion for long-term sustainability. As the year came to a close, so did the doors of the Lincoln Theater. It remains dark today, but we look forward to its rebirth later this year. Entering 2012, we're already seeing sidewalk and park pathway improvements underway. We anticipate new pedestrian wayfinding signage to help link North Yountville, as Town Manager likes to refer "no-yo," and so-yo, South Yountville, and all the stops in between. The Town Council agreed to cover the cost balance of Upper Valley disposals Townwide Cleanup Day this spring. We continue to support all of our veterans, including those who visit us for only a few months in the Pathway Home Nonprofit Treatment Program for Iraq and Afghanistan veterans with post-traumatic stress and traumatic brain injury, especially as we see thousands of our modern military returning home from foreign combat. What visitors to Yountville experience in small doses, not only the amazing food and wine, but also the smiles, the generosity, the vitality of our community, we will enjoy together all year long. On behalf of the entire Town Council and staff, I thank you for the trust and support you've given us to lead our community forward. Thank you. So we look forward to an equally vital and prosperous 2012. With that, I'd like to move on to Item 14B, which is an introduction of Kevin Gaither, our new public work supervisor. Graham?
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, Town Council. Kevin, if you could come up to the podium. We'd like to get you on TV so everybody can see who the new guy is. Kevin Gaither is our public work supervisor. As you recall, Barney LaRue retired. He is back working three days a week with us on our contract, but having been with the town for 26 years, he has some big shoes to fill. But Kevin has, grew up in Napa for 20 years, worked for Amador County in Jackson for 10 years, and then recently came from Lowdy for 10 years. One of the advantages of Kevin is that he's both done work in the office and out in the field. So he's got good computer skills and lots of certifications, so we're very happy to have him here and welcome him. And hopefully, when people see him around town, they'll welcome him as well.
Welcome. And before I ask you to just to give a greeting comment, I'll make it official. I'll come down and give you one of our Yountville Town- down and give you one of our Yountville Town Pins.
Well, thank you, Mayor. There you go. Thank you. And the shirt matches and everything. Well done. I don't speak in public much, so I'll do my best. As Graham mentioned, this is like coming home for me. I was raised in Napa. This is my stomping ground, so it's great for us to come back to what feels like our hometown. As he mentioned, I have 20 years in Public Works, another 10 in engineering. Barney, your exiting supervisor, was a wealth of experience. I just hope I can fill his shoes, and I promise to do my best and serve the community that we all live in. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for Stephen and Graham for bringing me here. I appreciate it. I'll do my best.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. I suspect the next time we see you, you might be in a bright orange.
I'll be Levi's boots and shirt, so I'll be out there running the system for you.
Great. Thank you. Next up, Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Battalion Chief Parks, welcome.
Hey. Just saying, talking to Sergeant Belmer, everyone else is better public speakers than he and I both. Happy New Year to the town council and the rest of the staff. This is the first report, or I'm sorry, this will be the fourth quarter for 2011. For the fourth quarter, 277 calls for the station, 48 medical aides, 10 public assists, one vehicle accident, which is low, three alarm soundings, two structure fires, and five miscellaneous fires with one tree down. And of those 277 calls, 70 were in town, 49 for the vets home, 152 for the county, and six as part of our automatic or mutual aid agreements with Napa City. You have a pretty packed house tonight. It looks like a pretty full agenda, so if it's, I'll skip around and just kind of get the high points of the report. One major incident was a structure fire on Calistoga on Christmas morning. Again, Yountville crews responded as part of the mutual aid plan and went up there, and then we had backfill from some of our other county stations. The other two events I'd like to touch on are, one kudos to my own staff and one kudos to our real supervisors of the public. For our own staff, we attended a drill in October, which is called the Urban Shield Exercise. It's a large regional exercise that involves the entire Bay Area, fire departments, police departments, actually, police departments, they have from all over the world, but fire departments from all over the Bay Area, as far down as Monterey. It's a large disaster exercise meant to test some of our technical skills, our skills we don't use every day, and you may have seen something in the local paper about it, but we went up against, it's a rated exercise. It's training value as well, but they also have nationally-recognized experts kind of rate your team on your skills. And against teams such as Oakland, San Jose, Santa Clara City, Santa Clara County, some pretty big players in our local area, our team came in second place. And that's made up of mostly the crew from the station right here in Yountville, along with other members of the county fire department and a couple of members from City Napa and a couple from American Canyon. So, that's a pretty big deal for us, and we're pretty proud of that, and that just, it's a testament to the amount of work and training and time that the guys put into honing their craft. And that's, again, they don't have nearly the resources to draw from as in Oakland or San Jose, but to come out that well, we're pretty proud of ourselves. So, that was in October. And then, kudos to the public, the people we actually work for. This year, another very successful toy drive. We kind of revamped the way we do business a little bit, and we didn't take as many people come by the station, but we were able to talk to some of the local charities and care facilities, like Aldea, CPS, Samaritan Family Center, the Volunteer Center, the Yountville School, kind of got a better feel for the families that are truly in need versus some that are just signing up on word of mouth. And very successful, a much different vibe this year. Really, really, the crew was really happy with how it came out. We were able to help around 500 to 600 people and families. And while we take a lot of the credit for it and the benefit of the thank yous, it really needs to be said that we're just the bearers of the good news. All of this, all our deliveries come from the public, and those who drop off the toys in the bins and who come by the station and drop off, whether it be gift cards or money or toys, you know, the public's the one who makes this thing happen. We just happen to be the mailmen. So, a big thank you to the community and the town for supporting it. It was incredibly successful this year. It's something that we're really proud of, and we really work hard at maintaining. Side note, that's not on the report, and another benefit to that same toy drive is on last Sunday, this past Sunday, there was a fire in a house in a pocket of county, which is just south of Redwood Road. We call it the girl streets, because I don't know if you're familiar, but all the street names in that area are generally women's names. Anyway, large family, small house, house is destroyed. There were four children in the house that actually go to Yountville Elementary School. So, because, again, of the toy drive, what we do is we keep a reserve kind of all year long for instances just like this, so that we don't give everything out at Christmas. So, we were able to come in the next day and give the family a whole new stack of toys, bikes, and then we take some of the money and we go buy children's diapers, formula for the babies, and clothing for the kids. So, we've spent a couple hundred dollars on the first day, and then some of the crew went down to Walmart today and bought another couple hundred dollars' worth of clothes for the family. So, again, that's, we're lucky enough to be the messengers, but that all comes from the donations that we receive from the public. So, it's a good year-round cause that, you know, luckily, we don't have to dip into very often. I do believe there's going to be a fundraiser that the school is setting up. There's a pasta feed, I believe, this Friday, and they've started a donation jar, you know, if you will, at the school itself. And I don't have any of the details, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, but contact the school for more information. But, again, the four of them did go to Yountville Elementary. So, I can't say enough, thank you to the public and the town for your support in the program. It's been very, very worthwhile for us.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see if Sergeant Belmer can compete with that presentation. Sheriff's Department Public Safety Quarterly Report.
Now we know why everybody loves farm and hates cops. I love you. They give out toys all year long. It was a pretty productive quarter. We almost doubled our calls to service from last year at the same time. We went up almost double from 474 to 727. So, I think we can attribute that to the fact that it was, the weather was so nice for this quarter. No rain, no rain forecasted. We had a lot more people in town during the week and on the weekends than we've had in past years. But even with that, crime trends pretty much stayed low. We're a little bit above the same time last year, but as far as every other quarter throughout the year, we're pretty much right on line with the same statistics, not too much different. We have seen a significant decrease in traffic actions, 27% over the last year. No fatalities, no injury accidents for the entire year, just a few minor injury accidents, which since from past years, is really a great improvement. Nothing out on Highway 29. I think a presence of deputies in the area, a lot more deputies from outside the town of Yountville being here has really increased that presence, and people are paying more attention, be more educated in what they're doing. We also, we saw two, I put down two of the major events that happened this year, and only because they both happened in the same place, the Yountville Deli.
Totally true.
I don't know whether, well, one was Ranch Market, two, and the other one was the Yountville Deli. And I don't know whether it's just a hotspot of crime or what. We actually had a gentleman walk in on the off-hours and steal tip money from the back of the deli, and through the help of video surveillance and tips from inside the store, we were able to identify the person. Our investigative unit went out, wrote a search warrant, and then found some of the evidence that actually tied him to the crime, and he ended up pleading out to misdemeanor burglary. So, that ended up well. And then, right after that, we had other employees in the Ranch Market, too, kind of a tilt-top embezzlement where they were stealing money from the register by returning items that were never bought. And their accounting firm caught the money, caught the totals being off, and had some investigation. What was important about it was not so much how we got about it, but we had a deputy who doesn't work in Yountville. It was reported about 7:30 in the morning before we came on duty. He responded and had both people in custody about three hours after it was reported. So, we had the crime wrapped up, the two employees that were responsible booked into jail about three or four hours after it had happened. So, I think it's things like that that really point to what kind of service we're trying to give the town, how important it is for us to, you know, even the small things have to be taken care of pretty quickly and make people feel like everything's the only K. So, we're trying to do that for everybody. I don't know if you saw, but on the last page of my narrative, I put a little map in there, and what this is, is if you go to the Sheriff's Department website, Napa County Sheriff's Department website on the net, and you can go in there and you can click on a crime map, and then in that map, you pick the full view, and it gives you a bunch of tabs to filter out what kind of crimes you're looking for, and you could put in actual areas like Yountville, St. Leon, whatever you want to do, and it will give you all the reported crimes in that area for whatever time you set it for. So, you set it for a quarter, it'll give you all the crimes reported. It's only giving you ones that actually draw case numbers and are reported. It's not giving you everyone to go to, because you just see a big blob of dots all over the map. So, this is a handy way to see what's going on in the area. It'll tell you what burglaries are happening and robberies and car break-ins and stuff like that. If anybody needs any help looking at it, come on into the office anytime, it goes to the public, too. Just stop by the office, we'll pull it up on a computer, show you how to get into it, and you can keep tracks of this area, any area in the state, really, that you want to watch crime trends and what's going on. So, it's kind of interesting. We use it a lot more than we're used to now. It's getting, it's building to the point where there's so much data going in, you can really, it's good now. It's a good tool to use. Other than that, we, it's been, it's been fairly quiet, I hate to use that word, it's going against everything I do, because the key words kind of add them over my vocabulary, but it's been a good quarter, fairly, you know, the same throughout the whole year, and we're kind of proud of the way that goes now. We write a lot less tickets. We make as many stops as we always did, maybe more. I think we're probably up 80 or 90 stops from the same time last quarter, but when I give out as many tickets, I think we're doing more education, and it seems to be working with our traffic accidents. So, we don't make as many people mad while they're giving out toys.
I did want to touch on one thing that's not technically on your quarterly report about NICSIL and the alert system. You touched on how you're using a little more mapping of crimes, but if you could maybe just explain a little bit of what NICSIL is and does for the community. We just had an incident a couple weeks ago where there were three burglary suspects just south of Yountville, and thanks to that service, many of us were alerted, and it may have even, in some ways, helped lead to some of the apprehensions, so.
Right. We're on NICSIL, we actually, Steve Rogers and I just had a meeting with Captain Stewart from the Sheriff's Department, bringing us up to speed on the whole NICSIL process. On notifications we could put out in the area about traffic, maybe accidents, special events, crimes that are occurring that you might want to keep an eye out for, and we'll be sending out those notices to people. All you do is go to nicksil.com, and you actually sign up for the service, give them your phone number, email address, wherever you want, and the notifications will appear out to those people that sign up for the actual, for NICSIL itself.
Yeah, I was very impressed. I was driving back up from Napa that morning and saw what I knew was the police helicopter starting to circle around Yountville, and as I was wondering what it was, then the buzz came in on my phone. So, it's very much a real-time alert system, which is really helpful, especially for people that want to know what's happening in their community.
And it would've been next quarter, but just since you brought it up, dumb luck, how it plays out. The deputies have been out on that call for about an hour, hour and a half when it first occurred on Silver Lot Trail. They burglarized a residence and then took off, had my, you know, clothing identification and things like that, and they had a perimeter set down by Oak Knoll and 29. So, when I came on at 8:00, I heard the incident, jumped in the car and headed that way, and they said they wanted me to go to Washington and 29 on the south end to set up a perimeter. As I'm driving down, just as I pass Hoffman, I see two guys jump into a creek just south of Hoffman, so I let it out. Another police officer's there from the Napa PD. We went in, found two guys under the bridge, then had made it outside the perimeter, two of the things. So, I got a few phone calls after that saying, "We've been sitting in the vineyard for an hour and a half freezing our butt off. You go 10:08 from the office and catch them in three minutes." Dumb luck.
No, that's just how good our team is here in Yountville.
It's just the way it is. And Kevin, you'll be glad to know every five minutes, we got a pin. Mike and I have been here about 10 years, and we haven't seen one.
You already have a badge and a weapon. I didn't think you needed a pin. Any other questions, Council?
I'll just.
Vice Mayor?
I do want to say thanks, since I'm one of the major events this time around. If you, I may be speaking somewhat incorrectly, but I had my car burglarized once in San Francisco, and I recall calling the police department, and they gave me the web address that you fill out, the online form that you can print out to give to your insurance company.
Exactly.
That's how the process works. I think it was for under $1,000. I'm not sure.
I've been pushing that, but they just won't go for it.
I know. But, and granted, we had two sets of videotape. We had an employee who recognized a gentleman from high school. That all helped a lot, but it was great that you guys did follow up on it.
That only helps to give the judge the okay to serve the search warrant.
That's right.
Unless you have that, you really don't get any.
And then you found the hat.
Exactly.
So, but it is the little things, you know, it's like they say with graffiti, the first one that goes up, if you don't get rid of it, then it goes crazy. I think having some guy from Napa who thinks he can just come up here and do something, if he didn't get caught, then he would do something bigger the next time. So, I think it was great that even the little things, we're able to follow up on that, and that's one of the great things about Napa County. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. And we'll have a couple pins waiting for both of you on your way out. What happens is, we pass them out at the end of the meetings, and you guys are always leaving early. Move on now to item 14E, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR, and we welcome our town auditor, Terry Craig. I believe we have a report prior to that with our finance director.
Yes, just some opening comments, if I may, Mayor, Council. You've all received a bound copy of the CAFR, and I would just like to let the public know that it is also posted on our website on the finance page. It's also part of the agenda online. There's a copy here in Town Hall for public viewing, and we've also put a copy in our local library that's available for people to read. The audit takes several months' process. We start at the end of June, closing out the books. It takes a couple months to get all the June transactions recorded, then we go through the audit process, prepare the financial statements, and make sure all of our numbers are accurate, and then we prepare a report and proofread it and publish it, and this year, we were able to send it off to GFOA in hopes of receiving another award. And none of that would be possible without the help of our auditor, Terry Craig, and he's here tonight to talk about the audit and our report. Terry?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to present to you your June 30, 2011 financial statements. I have completed the audit of the town's financial statements and have expressed an independent auditor's opinion that your financial statements do present fairly the financial position of the town's governmental activities, its business-type activities, its major funds, and its aggregated remaining funds, all in conformity with county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The auditor's report that is included in your document this year does have a comment about a change in accounting principle that is reflected in your 2011 financial statements, and that was the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54, which has changed the way that fund balance categories are presented in your audited financial statements. This new accounting standard basically requires that governmental fund-type fund balances be presented in several different categories. Those categories being what they call non-spendable fund balance, which is generally items that are not easily converted into cash, such as long-term notes receivables or prepayments. The next category would be restricted amounts, which are generally fund-balanced. The next category would be restricted amounts, which are generally fund balance amounts that are constrained by either regulatory or legal or other governments to be used only for particular purposes, such as your debt service reserve funds, your gas tax funds that are restricted for street uses and so forth. Then you have the committed fund balance category, which are amounts that the town council has determined to be set aside for use for only specific purposes, such as your emergency reserve. And then the additional categories are the assigned amounts, which are fund balance amounts that the town has determined may be used for certain specific purposes in the future, but it's more of an intention to use them, and that purpose can be undone. And then, of course, the residual balance of your general fund is considered to be an unassigned fund balance. Those show up really on page 15 of your, of the report before you in the governmental fund balance section. The report before you is organized into several sections. An introductory section, which contains your finance director's letter of transmittal, as well as the copy of the award for excellence in financial reporting that was awarded to the town by the Government Finance Officers Association in regard to the 2010 fiscal year report that was published by the town. Then the next section is the financial section, which contains my independent auditor's report, your basic financial statements, and the notes to your financial statements. There's a section called Required Supplemental Information, which is basically a budgetary comparison statement for your general fund. And then the remaining two sections are the statistical section and some supplemental information about your non-major funds. What I'd like to do is maybe give you a brief overview of the more significant financial highlights that's reflected in your 2011 financial statements. I'd like to break that into two perspectives, one being your governmental funds and the other being your business-type funds, which of course, for Yountville, are your water and your wastewater funds. The town ended 2011 with fund balances of about $1.8 million available in your general fund, $1.7 million available in your capital projects fund, $1 million in your debt service funds, and about $665,000 in your remaining governmental funds, and most of that being restricted funds related to your gas tax monies. Your capital projects fund in fiscal 2011 did report an additional $1 million in federal stimulus grant revenues that was used to finance the Bike Path project here in Yountville. And that fund also reported a $200,000 inflow of a special loan from the California Energy Commission to allow the town to finance some energy efficiency programs within the town. The town also contributed about $560,000 into a special trust fund to provide for the future funding of other post-employment benefits, which is basically the town's medical plan for retired employees. That said, that's more of the significant financial affairs of your governmental fund types. You do have two business-type funds, being your water and your wastewater funds. Those funds actually collectively ended fiscal 2011 with relatively little cash, other than the, about $2.5 million that is set aside as a drought relief or rate stabilization fund in case of price emergencies in your water enterprise, as well as some capital improvement funds that are earmarked for special projects in the future. Both of those funds, the water and the wastewater fund, had negative cash flows in fiscal 2011, meaning that there was a decrease in their aggregate cash balances as a result of operating the funds and as a result of making capital improvements. I think the decrease was about $126,000 in the water enterprise fund and not quite $300,000 in your wastewater fund. And the primary reason for the larger decrease in the wastewater fund had to do with spending for some capital improvements that were made. On an overall basis, your town ended fiscal 2011 with about $7 million available for the town's use going into the current fiscal 2012 year. Overall, that's a brief summary. It was reflected in your June 30, 2011 audited financial statements. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, if I can. And there is a separate report that's been provided to you regarding the normal conduct of the audit process, and if you have any questions in regard to that information, be happy to respond to them if appropriate.
Thank you very much for the recap of the report. Are there specific questions from counsel? Councilor Hall, really?
Really no questions. It's a great, it's a great document. For those of you that haven't had the chance to review, and I suggest wholeheartedly it's good reading material before bed, if you're not an accountant.
Thank you, and thank you for continuing to bring us really strong, positive news.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, our finance director, for all the hard work that you put into, and we hope you win back-to-back awards this year. Thank you for your hard work. And if that wasn't what everyone was here for, I have a feeling the next item might be just that item. Our sole public hearing tonight will be item 15B, Heston Vineyards, a master development plan for 6548 Washington Street. And we will start this, want to make sure we don't have any conflicts on the council?
Oh, I have one.
Do we have it?
I don't have a conflict, but I need to disclose.
Do you have a statement to make? Councilmember Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dunbar. I've consulted with the town attorney, and he's advised me that while the discussion on wine tasting room regulations within the town of Yountville will have no direct impact upon my, upon the operations of my employer, Cliff Lady Vineyards, to the extent that there may be indirect impacts upon my employer, these economic impacts are not significant enough under the regulations of the FPPC to result in my disqualification. At this time, I elect to participate, but am required to disclose that I'm an employee with Cliff Lady Vineyards, serving as its vice president of finance.
Thank you very much. And with that, I welcome a staff report.
Good evening. The item before you is a master development plan review to redevelop the property between Gates Estates and Edward James Courtyard, and it's shown here in this slide. In 2010, the property was rezoned from a residential use to a commercial use, and it paves the way for this redevelopment. It's currently developed with a single-family residence at the front of the parcel and a triplex at the rear, and the applicant proposes to raise both of those existing structures and to remove the existing driveway and all paving, all existing landscaping and trees. And proposed is a 2,440 square foot, two-story structure of a contemporary design, and it consists of the ground level shown on the lower side, lower portion of this slide, which is 1,400 square foot area for wine tasting and cookware retail. And the upper portion of the slide shows the approximately 1,040 square foot residential use, which is two units, one of which is a studio and the other which is a one-bedroom. The structure is proposed to be set back 10, 15 feet from the front property line, 18 feet on the side, and 46 feet from the rear. And when originally presented to the ZDRB, the applicant proposed a zero lot line on the north side, and that's shown in this slide, right on the property line. But the applicant has since pulled the building back three feet from that property line and is proposing the trellises you see in an overhead view here, which would be connected to a green screen or other mesh materials so that a vine can be grown on them. And it's shown in this elevation to soften the impact of the building between the residential and commercial uses. This slide shows the wall as it was originally presented at a zero lot line, and there's no articulation or openings on the building. The building is proposed to be 27 and 1/2 feet in height, and that's 14 feet approximately to first floor plate height and 20 feet to second floor plate height. At the, above the second story, the applicant proposes a six-foot-tall mechanical room, and that's shown generally in this area here. And as you can see, the roof line is angular with several different treatments, and it really presents quite a contemporary design. The rear parking lot is shown on this slide, and it's accessed by a 14-foot-wide driveway that's on the south side of the parcel. It provides access to two cupboard stalls for the residential use and the remaining six open stalls for the commercial use. Four trees are proposed along the rear property line, and a six-foot-tall concrete masonry block wall is proposed to separate the parking lot from the two residential uses. A new five-foot-wide sidewalk is proposed, the Washington Street side of the property, and this will connect with an existing standard sidewalk that's at the Gates Estates property. There will also, the project will also achieve up to two new on-street parking spaces on And then lastly, two trash enclosures are proposed for the use. One is incorporated into the building at the rear of the structure, and the other is a detached unit at the southeast corner of the parking lot. This property is in the residential scaled commercial zoning district, and this is a district for commercial structures and uses that affect the appropriate transition to the adjoining residential neighborhoods. And this standard is unique to the RSC district because of the proximity of residential uses. And in this case, the property abuts residential uses on two sides for a portion of that north property line and the east property line. And the project generally complies with the zoning ordinance and design ordinance standards, and these are detailed in the staff report and include height, FAR, open space requirements, and parking requirements. And so my presentation will be limited to just two items tonight. One is the contemporary design of the building and how this fits into the fabric of Washington Street. The zoning and design ordinance emphasize that commercial developments shall preserve and promote the town's rural scale and character, and that it shall be compatible with that character. And so that's a question before you. The second issue is the impact of the building's placement three feet from the north property line and the adjacent residential building at the height you see here, and this is the elevation that we're talking about. This three-foot setback on the north side is a concern to staff because of the residential use. And in response to this concern of staff, as well as the ZDRB and the neighbors, applicant pulled the building back, as I say, by three feet. Following this revision, however, the adjoining property owner and resident submitted the emails considering your packets, and they stress that even the three-foot setback will result in a lot, loss of light and sunshine for that residential unit and an increase in shading and moisture conditions. And, let me go to the next slide. This is shown here. Staff notes that a portion of the residential unit has a reduced setback that's six feet from the rear property line, and that's the section right here. And the Old Town Historic District has a minimum setback of 15 feet, so the residence is somewhat non-conforming. And this does contribute to the impact of the building. The applicant submitted these shade studies that illustrate the shading impacts of the building, and this is the proposed shading condition at, in March at noon, and you can see that the shade just slightly encroaches onto the building. In June, the sun is high and there is really little, if any, impact. In September, it begins to encroach again, and by December, there's a significant portion of the building that's shaded. The applicant argues that the existing residence is currently shaded with vegetation, but staff notes that vegetation can be pruned or removed and that a building, of course, cannot. In response to the opinion of four of the five ZDRB members that the building and driveway should be flipped, the applicant submitted these different options for revised site layout. And applicant argues that these options, these configurations won't work because of the constrained area on the south property line. And this first option shows that to maintain the parking spaces and the drive aisle for access, that the building encroaches 15 feet into the front property line. The second option cuts off a portion of the building, and you can see how much shorter it is in the first option. And on the third, if it's to meet the front setback, it reduces the drive aisle to an unworkable standard. And staff notes that it is difficult when the building is flipped in this manner, and that a larger redesign would really be necessary if the building were to respond to the parcel and to fit appropriately the physical site conditions. At its current location on the north property line, the, the open space of the driveway works well with the open space of Edward James Courtyard property and the parking lot there. And what that does is open up views of the site from Washington, and from an urban planning perspective, this is really positive. So there is merit in placing the building on the north property line. Staff also agrees that the parcel faces some significant constraints, that it is, I'm going to go back to a, a site layout for you, that the north property line is longer than the south property line, and to maximize the site, it's more effective to place the building on the, on the north side. In addition, the access drive consumes quite a large portion of the property, and the applicant wasn't able to obtain the approval of the Edward James Courtyard owner to obtain access from that parking lot. The parcel is small for a commercial property, it's irregular shaped, and it's also burdened with replacement housing requirement of two residential units. So given the impact of the two-story structure adjacent to this residence here, staff has addressed several discussion items for you tonight. One is to reexamine the requirement for two replacement residential units that were a condition of approval of the rezone. These units are driving the development of this limited site to its maximum density and intensity and contributing to the mass and scale on this north property line. Staff's experience with the residential component of mixed-use development such as this is that the residential units don't always fulfill their intended purpose of housing the employees of the businesses on site, and they can be used as owners' residences or for longer-term tourist uses rather than residential. The elimination of either or both units could reduce the height of the building and the impact on the neighbors, I say. And their elimination may result in an increase in the commercial FAR because the site is at 19%. It could go up to 25%, but it should be noted that the 15% for the residential can't be credited to the commercial portion. The second issue is that some of the building massing is associated with this mechanical room that sits on the top of the property, and if the mechanical room could be located elsewhere, that reduction in height may eliminate some of the impact to that adjoining residence. The third option is that since this is a master development plan property, there's design flexibility as to the zoning standards, and minimum side setbacks are not specified in the zoning code. And so these are determined as part of this process, and a three-foot side yard setback could be approved where you can find that the appropriate transition has been made to the residential and that the building is compatible with the scale of the adjoining residential. This flexibility can also be applied to the front setback, which is 15 feet, and which I showed in that one slide, to reduce the setback in consideration of the constraints posed by the, the shorter south property line of the building and the driveway were flipped. Special design requirements also apply to RSC buildings such as this, and the ZDRB could have required the installation of story poles to illustrate the 3D massing or the architectural character of the building if they deemed this necessary to evaluate the impact of the project. They didn't, mostly in response to the fact that four of the five thought that the building and driveway should be flipped, but this is an option open to you if you need additional information to evaluate this impact. Tonight, you can either approve or deny the project, or you can provide recommendations to the applicant on any modifications. And a resolution isn't before you tonight because staff didn't have sufficient feedback with which to recommend any one of these three options to you. So what we're hoping is that we get a robust discussion with feedback and recommendations that staff can incorporate into a resolution that we would bring before you at a future meeting date. And I'm free to answer any questions if you have them.
The first question I'm going to ask you is, could you go over again the specific points of consideration that you'd like to hear from us? Because I thought you said you had six, and I didn't get six written down.
Oh, I had, I think I had three. One was-
Okay, I got three.
Okay.
Then you had a couple sub-points.
I guess, yes.
Okay. So you basically, the requirement of the housing units, the building massing, and the impact of the mechanical room on the roof to that massing, and then the allowances being a master development plan for some flexibility in the design standards, whether they be the side setback on the north side or front setback if it's moved to the south side, for example.
Mm-hmm.
Those are kind of your primary issues. We're going to talk about a lot of other things, I suspect, but those, we're going to definitely touch on. And no action, official action tonight, we have no, and I just want to kind of make that clear to everybody tonight. We are not approving or denying this application as a whole tonight.
Pardon me. If you wanted to approve or deny it tonight, you could, and we follow that up with the next meeting with a resolution.
But we can't, we don't have a resolution to approve, technically. We can give you-
I don't believe you need the resolution to approve, so that could be, it would follow up at the next meeting, but I'll turn that over to the-
Yeah, let me clarify on that. What we would be asking in that particular case is for direction and feedback from the council, and then on your next consent calendar would be a perfunctory resolution affirming those findings and the decision that you made tonight.
So there may be a discussion that draws us to a, what we as a council would consider an acceptable, you know, adjustment or, or changes, or on its face, acceptance of this application, but we are not voting on that judgment, but we may be discussing it and presenting you then with a plan we want you to bring forward, but we're not, we may not have agreement with the applicant tonight on those conditions.
You have the alternative to provide direction to the applicant to modify the project, in which case there would be no final end product, we'd be waiting to see that. If you made a determination that, no, you weren't going to approve the project, you could make and provide direction for staff, or if you were to approve it with some minor modifications, then staff could come back. So you have a range of options, and what staff is really seeking, based on the dialogue, is feedback from you, and then we'll be able to know what affirming action, if that's your direction.
I want to make sure it's clear, not only to me and the council, but also to the public and the applicant, because when we go through public comment and hear things, hear from the applicant, and then close public comment, we will then be discussing it not with an opportunity to readdress the applicant or hear again from the public. So I want to make sure it's understood, that everything you want to say, we need to hear during the public comment portion of this, and then we will be discussing it. We may be asking staff for clarification, but then it's really going to be in our hands to either accept it as it's being presented, or deny it as it's being presented, or come up with some plan in between. So there's no clear action that may or may not be taken tonight, so we're just going to have to see where this goes.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Town Council, I think it's important to note that the, because you do not have a resolution, whatever direction you provide for staff or, or conclusion that you make on this project, the actual resolution is your final action.
Okay. So could you change? Yes. So, well, we'll see what happens.
All right.
We're going to see what happens. So I'm going to officially open the public hearing on this item, and before I invite the applicant to address the council and the audience, I do want to just recognize there are some email correspondence in the, in the staff report. Linda Beard sent an email to council and staff, as did Kathleen Braun. I also received, as the rest of the council and the town manager did, receive an email from a resident, Don Henfling, who lives adjacent to part of this property. So those emails have been received and are part of the record. So with that, I invite any member of the applicant team to come up and either make a presentation, clarify any points that have been part of the discussion with the zoning and design review board. Certainly, you're not required to speak, but now would be an invitation for you to do so.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Faro Essalat, and I'm the architect for the Heston Project before you. My statements to the ZDRB and the Town Council were included in our submittal for review. They lay out the premise for the design, and here I shall only make brief reference to them for the record. The project consists of a retail space and two residential units mandated for the site by council at the time of rezoning the property to commercial. The property itself is a small lot of approximately 7,000 square feet, with the northern property line being longer than the southern property line. The client's program required us to provide them with a 25 percent FAR commercial space and a 15 percent FAR residential split into two units, with the required driveway and parking. With the site being as tight and constricted as it is, in practice and after reviewing various options, it became clear that by including the two residential units that were mandated, and the parking requirements, the 25 percent FAR commercial area was not achievable, and the clients had to settle for less than 20 percent FAR. The project as it stands complies with all the zoning requirements of the town, and no variances are requested. Although we had consulted with the owners of the property to the north before going to the ZDRB, we did not receive any negative feedback until the meeting itself, at which time they objected to the zero lot line placing of the building. The ZDRB was sympathetic to this concern, and why they liked the project asked us to see if anything can be done to mitigate the proximity of the building, including placing the driveway to the north. I have provided for your review three alternatives showing the results of flipping the building and having the driveway to the north. The lot being narrower on the south side, in all three options, it is physically not possible to accommodate the required square footage and the parking without having something give in the process. There should have to be either a reduction in the number of parking spaces, or in the front setback by about 10 feet, or a reduction in the area of the retail space, which is already less than allowed. Reducing the retail area was not an option, as the owners would be left with only a 10-foot-wide showroom. The other two options required variances, which we felt would not be granted if the neighbors' concerns could be addressed by other means. The option of not having the two residential units, as brought up in the staff report, was not acceptable to the owners, as they had paid for the property to include those units as mandated by the council. Consequently, we revised the plans, and by giving up some landscaping, moved the building three feet south to create a buffer zone along the north side of the property, adding architectural features like vine-covered trellises and changing cladding materials to visually soften that side of the building. We also lowered the overall height of the building. Along with this revision, we carried out shadow studies to show that the claim that the Beard property will never see the light of day ever is an exaggeration made for effect, and that the shadow cast in December, when the sun is at its lowest, is no worse than the existing conditions with the vegetation and trees on that property. In addition to these studies and the revisions, there are other compelling reasons for placing the driveway on the south side of the property, and these are addressed in detail on the statements that I included with our submittal. One, at a site meeting with the fire department, this location was their preferred alternative. Two, with the driveway to the north, the two residential units and their decks would face directly north and into the Beard property and affect privacy issues. Had this option been initially proposed, I'm sure we would have received objections and concerns of a different nature. In this respect, we followed the planning staff recommendations that decks close to adjacent properties should be avoided. And lastly, we felt that any new building here should not only deal with all the utilitarian requirements and the constraints, but be an attractive addition to the town, a building that would be expressive of its function and invoke a refreshing emotional response from the residents and the town's tourists alike. From urban design point of view, as was pointed out, with the site obliquely set to Washington Street, we feel it is the right solution to expose the more open and interesting side of the building to the streetscape and the adjacent shopping plaza, and at the same time, maintain privacy for the neighbors on the north side. So in your review, I respect the request that you give consideration to all the formative factors that have gone into this design, and see the proposals as a balanced and well-reasoned solution to a difficult set of problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do want to just mention to council, I failed to invite council to ask staff questions of the report, so after I ask council if they have any questions from Mr. Essalat in his presentation, I do want to, during our public comment, we'll go back to Sandra and ask for clarification on any points from the staff report. So with that, I'll ask Councilmember Dornbecker, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Actually, I do, and that, my primary question is, why is it necessary to have the additional space on the roof for mechanical things that, you know, in addition to the, already it's two stories, you know, makes it taller?
Again, that came about by discussion with the planning department, that the preference for the town was to screen mechanical equipment that would have to go up on the roof, and that space that is up there, which is actually lower now by two feet than what you see on that rendering, houses the mechanical equipment that's up in, in the roof. We don't have to have that, but then we would have to expose the mechanical that would be placed on the roof.
And where do you propose that the, your, your trash is going to be, and is it enclosed?
It is enclosed. There are two locations that are shown on the site. One is on the lower right-hand corner, and then there is another portion underneath the building where the laser dot is.
And I guess I don't quite understand why, why the building couldn't be flipped to have the driveway on the north side rather than the south side. I really don't, I don't quite understand that.
If you were to look at the plan, you can see that the lower property line, which is the south side, is actually narrower than the northern side. So the three options which I've sent in the diagrammatic form, if you look at those, you'll see that in either of those cases, once you have placed the parking and the driveway and the backup space at the back of the property, the remaining area that's left from that point to the street is now reduced by the fact that the lower property line is smaller. So the footprint that's left to accommodate the actual building is now less, and therefore the footprint, as it stands, cannot be fit in there. So the three options give us the alternatives. One is to have less parking, so we can shift the building back and set it behind the front setback. The other is to intrude into the front setback and shift the building further forward on the street. And the third is to, which is the middle one, is to keep the parking, keep the front setback, and end up with a showroom, which is about 10 feet deep.
I see. And you feel that the amelioration of those problems would be to not have the, the residential component? Is that correct?
I'm not sure I quite understand the question.
No, that wouldn't ameliorate that problem?
You mean not to have the residential? Well, if we were not to have the residential, then we would have less parking, and maybe then we can work something out, because then if the parking is reduced, then we can increase the commercial, but that would also increase the parking, so it would be a question of having to juggle it and see whether it would work or not.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall, questions to the applicant?
Yeah, if I may, thank you, and thank you for explaining that, and let me just make sure I understand. So, I think I get it. If, so you're, you as a represent, representative for the client, or the applicant, is saying that you, they are open to the condition of moving the property to the south property line, that's correct? If we are to consider some of these other options with regards to setbacks or other, other conditions, correct?
No, that's not, that is not correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure I understand. So it's not a, you're not interested in moving to the south part, south side of the parcel, correct?
Our argument is that the ideal design, as far as the city is concerned, is that the building should face the parking lot of the adjacent property south, this side, so that this view of the building that you see here is viewed from the city and from the sidewalk as people move up and down the sidewalk.
Understood.
From the city, and that's my input as an architect, I do not believe that having the dead side of the building on this prospect is favorable to the city. And so what we've tried to do is to try and mitigate the condition of the back wall facing the residential units-
Right.
-by setting it back three feet and adding to it architectural features that would soften that, that view. And that included adding extra windows to the top, changing the siding materials, and adding the trellises. Also, another option, but that would again depend on the planning depart, planning department approving it, would be, we, as of right now, have about another two feet of landscaping alongside our driveway, that we can give that up as well and shift the building to another two feet, so that would give us a five-foot setback, which is actually what, if this wasn't even commercially zoned, it was residentially zoned, that's the required setback for a two-story residential unit.
Sure.
So we would fall into that set of ordinances there.
I see. So then, just to repeat kind of what I asked, because I think I understood it, you're, the interest by the applicant is truly not to move it to the south side, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because of all these factors that you just discussed, and we understand, okay. I think I understand, thank you.
And we also have the issue with the fire department, that we met at the site with them, and that was their preference, so that becomes another issue of having to-
Was the park, was the entrance into the parking lot from the south entrance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Moeller, questions to the applicant?
Yes. First, you mentioned when there was a discussion about the trash receptacles, that some, some were going to be placed underneath the building. So that leads to my question regarding the utilities that you now have placed on the roof. Had you considered putting those underneath the building, whatever that means?
If you were to actually review the plan, you will see that every inch of space is now accounted for in this plan. It's so tight and so restricted that there is not enough room to include that on, on that floor.
I'm not talking about that floor, I'm talking about underneath the building, like digging a hole.
In the basement, you mean?
Right. If, whatever that means, right.
The water table, apparently, in Yountville, at some point, we actually were thinking of having a basement in this building for storage purposes, and we were told that the water table is so high in Yountville that it's not a practical solution to have anything lower than the first floor. And so that option was never really even considered.
But you haven't really tested it for that property, because it, it may vary throughout town.
We have not, we have not done so, but we were advised against it by the planning department, who is familiar with the town.
Okay. My next question, you mentioned that the owner, or at least suggested that he was very interested in having these two housing units-
Correct.
-and probably renting them out?
Correct.
So that is important to him, that's good. Also, the, you mentioned that the retail space, as it stands right now, I thought I read different numbers- different numbers, was actually less than needed. Could you comment on that?
The allowable retail space on this property is 25% of the lot area.
Right.
And we were not able to get that, because as soon as you add another 250 square feet to the retail space, that requires another parking space, which we do not, cannot accommodate.
So what percent retail do you have?
Nineteen and a half percent.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Vice Mayor.
May I just say something else with respect to the
Certainly.
equipment? That the intent was to try and enclose the equipment up above the roof, but as I was saying earlier, if that is the issue, that, you know, the height of that six feet of attic space, which would occur, whatever kind of roof we were to put on there, but if that is something that is a point of contention, what we could do would be to put the equipment there and then run some kind of fencing around it, maybe at the height of four feet or something of that kind. It would, it would leave the equipment open to the air, but it would be screened from the street.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So I think you answered one of my questions, which I wasn't clear on when you gave your presentation, is that the owners are intent on having the residential units, is that correct? And can I ask why?
Can I speak?
Actually, let's, let's finish with any questions we have here, and then I'll be more than happy to hear from you next.
Okay, so I'll get that answer
Yes.
question answered next. Maybe this is for you, maybe this is for your client, you're directed by your client, so when you first approached this property and you looked at Yountville, why this design? What made you think Yountville when you thought about this particular design for this building?
Well, what we were looking at, or what we were rather trying to avoid was anything that became a pastiche of, you know, Mediterranean-looking building, or we studied the street up and down, and we found that there was a lot of those, and we felt that something more innovative and of the time should be built here. And a building of this kind, we felt that the front portion of it was indicative of a commercial area, and then the second floor, which was the two residential units housed underneath a sloping roof, would be indicative of its function. And therefore, we felt it was true to its nature in terms of the architectural language that was being used to envelop the functions.
What are the materials in terms of the white, and they appear from here to be bricks, but, and the brown or copper color? What are, what are those materials?
The brown is copper, which would eventually weather to a dark brown, as is shown here. The staircase tower, which is to the right, is done with stucco. The front wall is in architectural concrete.
Okay. Thank you.
Several of the questions that I have are technical, but I think probably best for staff, but I do want to touch on, there are many, many parts to this application, and some of which have been basically ignored to this point, but they do impact the ability to potentially relocate the building. Can you talk about the solar panels, where they are, because I don't see them represented clearly on the renderings, and what impacts moving the building may or may not have on the ability to use the solar capture?
The solar panels are, we're reviewing two different kinds right now. One would be integrated into the sloping roof, placed over the standing seam, copper roof, which is on that slope here, and then there's another slope in the back. Depending on the amount that we need, if we can confine it to the slope in the back, we would prefer that, because it would be screened from the street, from Washington. If not, then we would incorporate it into the sloping roof and possibly use the flat roof on top of the mechanical for any additional. At this point, we've not worked out the quantity of panels that you would require.
It sounds like you're talking about a couple different directions potentially of placing those panels, so you don't feel the need to require a southern exposure or any specific exposure to maximize that?
No.
So you have flexibility with the direction, so that if the decision is that we feel it appropriate to require relocating the building, initially, one of my thoughts was you were requiring the northern side of the property to expose the south side of the building for that sun exposure, but you're saying it's not critical for the sun exposure?
No. Sliding the building further south would essentially keep the roof intact in terms of its orientation, so it would make no impact on that.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question about the trash enclosures that have been brought up by, especially the one resident that would be most directly impacted by the detached enclosure in the southeast corner of the property. How would you mitigate the noise and potential odor impacts of an enclosure on that corner of the property that would be adjacent to residential property over the fence?
Well, could you get the panel, please, a second? The one that's on the right-hand side here, I understand that all such enclosures have to be enclosed and have to be roofed as well, so it would be completely enclosed, and it is maybe about 10 feet or so away from the property on the right-hand side. On this side, it is backing up against the existing parking lot that's there.
And is your proposal that these are bins that would be
Correct.
What would be the refuse removal plan? Are these taken to the curb side, so there's no truck that would be trying to maneuver into that back area, or what is the
Most probably, yes.
That they'd be hand-pulled
Correct.
bins that come out, so the dumping of the trash wouldn't be happening back in the parking area?
Correct.
Is your, what you're saying? Okay. And even though you've offered the three options, you and your client are not interested in any of the three options of relocating the building to the south? That is your preference to not move the building, clearly?
Correct.
But of the three options, is there one that is the most palatable for our consideration? If we feel like it's just absolutely too inappropriate for this size of a building to be so close to residential property to your north, is there one you would recommend, or are you not in a position to recommend, because you're then having to decide if you lose parking, if you encroach in a setback, lose too much retail space, but is there something you can recommend as a, as a reasonable plan B if we need to go that direction?
Well, I think either of the two options, losing parking or losing front setback, should be offered, and then we would have to see which works best with the plans that we have.
So kind of a deal breaker for you would be reduction in the size of the retail space, because it's already at a minimum
Yeah, they would have to abandon the whole thing, it's just nonsense.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify your priorities in terms of the certain elements to, that we're trying to negotiate here.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The minimal that space that we right now have for retail is that 19.5%, which is
Correct.
tight as it is, but we cannot get anything more than that, given the parking, the driveway, and the units. So anything less than that would break the project.
Right, okay, thank you. So I think right now what I'll do is I'll thank you for your comments and questions, and ask if you'd take a seat. We will continue with the public, but I do want to have some questions, I definitely have some of staff. I do want to get back to that before we go further into the public comment. So I'll invite any other members of the council, if you have questions for Sandra about her report or any of the details. Councilmember Mueller.
The primary one I want to talk about right now is the, is the front setback, the 15 feet. And I didn't really look up all those, those requirements, but it just seems like many of our older buildings along Washington really don't have that setback. So is this something like fairly new, or just something that we've, can you just talk to that, please?
It's newer than the Gates Estates building, and you can see that here. It's really just at the back of the sidewalk. And Faro, the architect, just mentioned that if the building were on the south side, instead of a 15-foot setback, it'd be reduced to about five feet, so that's even, probably a little greater than this corner here. But of course, that's just the corner, and this is a greater setback. It's not linear with the street. So it's a newer standard, the 15-foot setback, but that's what's on the books right now. Of course, I did mention this is a master development plan property, and so it's uniquely suited to have this type of exception, and it's, it's an exception allowed without a variance, so.
And we, do we have to make findings if we allow that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And actually, if I may, that's, if I could, Mayor and council, I'd like to clarify and explain a little bit, because I do see where there may be some confusion in terms of the council's course of actions and the public feedback. First, the council has the option tonight, based on all of the testimony, to either approve or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. That's fairly straightforward. And then you would provide direction, and the council, our staff would return with a resolution, either affirming approval or approving the denial. The second course of option is that the council, based on all of the feedback from tonight's public hearing, can provide direction to the applicant for a redesign of the project that may achieve favorable council response, should the applicant so desire. And I do need to point out that the applicant is obviously would need to do that. So when you get into that, as Sandra was alluding to, as this is a master development plan, the council has much greater flexibility overall with modifying and agreeing to. So for example, you could say, given the location, maybe something less than 15 feet in the front setback is appropriate, given the built environment. Same thing with the landscaping requirements, same thing with the rear, the, excuse me, the side setback. You also have the discretion to review your determination on the housing units, and if you do determine that perhaps there's too much on this site that you're trying to achieve and you want to take the housing out, that is the council's prerogative. You do have the option to provide some fairly strong feedback and direction as to the type of design and the site location, and you could provide feedback and direction on whether a south or a north driveway. So I do want to make sure, and if that was the case, then what we would recommend is that you continue the public hearing, so that the applicant would go back, work with his architect, come up with a new rendering, public would be able to review that at a later meeting, and hopefully that might be something that staff could continue to work with the applicant, based on some of that feedback and direction. But I do want you and the audience and the applicant to recognize that there are some opportunities to review some of the constraints that the architect has originally denied in cited this, and you may determine that it's not the, you know, based on these changes, you'd like the architect to, to do a better job of citing an appropriate building that you believe fits the site with the constraints and the neighboring property. So I just want to clarify that a little bit, so hopefully that, that answers that a little bit better for the council and the, and the public.
With staff questions? Additional staff questions? Vice Mayor.
Sandra, you keep referring to this as a master development plan project. Is that simply because it's a commercial project? Why is this a master development plan project?
All undeveloped commercial properties are subject to master development plan.
Okay. So in that case, I know that provides a lot more flexibility, shall we say? I mean, a zero lot line is okay in a commercial area. I think the issue we're talking about is, is it commercial that abuts a residential zoned area?
Correct. Because as you recall, the Somersden project does have a zero side yard setback, but of course, that abuts Piazza Quercia, very different than this situation that's residential.
Okay. The residential units, I assume, can, I mean, they could be running for 30 days, right? I mean, are, 31 days?
Yeah, greater, correct.
Should be greater than 31 days?
Potentially 31.
That could, that's an option under our current ordinances.
Right.
Let me see if I had anything else on here. In, in this zone, what is the, what is the maximum? Is it 30 feet is the maximum height?
Correct. And it was originally proposed at 29 and a half feet, and they've reduced it by two, two feet.
Okay. And is the use permit part of this request, as to the hours? I assume that's part of it as well?
Right, right. There's the uses for wine tasting and retail, and that's explained in the staff report, but we really haven't gone into that too deeply tonight.
Right.
You're, of course, free to comment on that, but that'll be part of the resolution when it comes back, a full set of use permit conditions for the operation of the business.
Okay.
The master development plan includes a sign review and the use permit consideration.
Use permit, both. Okay, thank you.
So a few questions I have, Sandra, of you. One has to do with the shade study, in your opinion, and I'll invite the applicant, owner, applicant, the whole team, if necessary, to address this. Is it standard to do a shade study at noon, when it seems to me that would be the least impactful shadow line of the entire day, no matter what month it is? Or is that at the discretion of the applicant?
Quite frankly, this is the first time we've asked for a shade study, and this, these were the times selected by the applicant. We felt like the, when it shows the December shadow that's cast, that it was significant, and they're not showing January and November, so in those months, there's also a shadow cast, and so we felt it supported staff's position that it was extreme shading of the structure. And the timing, I'm sorry.
Because of the east-west?
Well, the sun altitude is highest in the sky then, and these are the equinoxes and
Sure, but in terms of calculating time of day, is it staff's opinion that this is an appropriate calculation for us to consider?
Yes, because it shows the four extremes.
Extremes only during the time of year, but not during the time of day, is my point.
Well, the sun would be
But the time of day, you're saying, won't matter?
Yeah, well, the sun would be at its, its highest, and then as the day progresses, it's going to, of course, get worse or
But my point is, because we're talking about the shadows to the north, you're saying at 9:00 AM or at 4:00 PM in the afternoon, because we're talking about east-to-west sun movement, it won't have significant impact on the shade to the north?
It will be better or worse, but this is a medium, kind of average through the day.
So you're, even though the applicant shows this, you're confident that this is a reasonable measure for us to consider?
Sure, you, you could take an individual day and do through the day of what it looks like, and it's going to
That would fluctuate.
progress lower and higher, so this is sort of the average of the day.
Okay, thanks. About this potential option to encroach on the front setback, and I may be mixing residential encroachment with commercial, or it may be the same, I don't remember the exact language, because the encroachment would not be the building itself, the encroachment, or is some of the building actually encroaching?
Yes.
Okay, then I need to
10 feet of the building would be encroaching, and some of the improvements shown at the front patio and the deck in this option one, they extend over what would be the sidewalk, so there would have to be a redesign of that portion of the front patio and those other improvements.
So looking at the only, let's look at these three options just quickly. Option three loses parking.
That's unacceptable to staff, because there isn't sufficient backup space in the driveway.
Okay. I'm just going to cross out option three for my own understanding.
And option two is unacceptable to the applicant, so we're really looking at option one.
And the option two is unacceptable because it impacts the size of the retail space?
By 10 feet.
If that's the only way to get the building out of the, the encroachment, is that correct?
Correct.
And we're still looking at patio and bench encroaching, but the building is out of it, encroaching the area?
Well, no, because the patio and bench are not considered part of the building.
Right, well, that's what, that was the point I was considering.
So it's a permitted front yard improvement.
But the retail space is so diminished that it's unacceptable to the applicant, basically not enough room to do business. Okay. And then, so you're saying And then, so you're saying staff would be open to option one as is presented, separate from whether it's desired or undesired, in terms of it meeting the conditions and being able to work with the encroachment or not? Does staff not accept any of these options?
I think we're willing to look at option one. This is all we've been given by the applicant. I think, given the placement of the adjoining buildings, it makes sense to consider it. I think that there are exceptional circumstances that apply to the property because of that short south property line, and I think it is worthy of consideration. I don't think that we'd support it as presented because there's been no modification to the front patio and bench that would now essentially sit on top of the sidewalk. We still want a five-foot sidewalk, so that portion would have to be adjusted.
And is the 14-foot drive aisle the minimum required? Could it be more narrow?
I want to be there.
Well, they've already consulted with the fire, Cal Fire, on the width of the drive and this is a reduction already.
So this is a small, is as narrow as it can get, is the 14?
That's the one they agreed to at this point, yes.
Is that the applicant's desire or is that the fire department saying it has to be at least 14?
They agreed to a 14-foot wide driveway, Cal Fire did, because the applicant wanted to push the building more or use a little bit more of that space towards the south to create some more retail space because the building was even less in area prior to that.
Understood. So you're saying Cal Fire has already gone below what they would have considered a standard width?
Yes.
But they're willing to go this far?
And whether they would go further, that is unknown.
Understood. It sounds like this is the minimum that they would be comfortable with. Okay.
And I believe this configuration allows Cal Fire to fight a building fire either from the driveway on the north side or from the Edward James courtyard parking lot. They can still get to the rear of the building because of that long distance to the rear.
Sure. It's not just, we're not just talking about business traffic, we're talking about public safety vehicles being able to maneuver. Right. Okay, let me see. I think those are my questions of staff. So I, since we are still in our public hearing, and I would invite any other members of the applicant team to come, and I believe we have at least one other person. And once we hear from all the folks associated with the application, then we'll, I'll invite other members of the public to come and comment. So thank you for your patience and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and the esteemed council members and staff. My name is Stanley Chang. I am trustee of the Chulun Trust. It's a family trust and I'd like to introduce to you my wife, Helen, and our pride and joy, our daughter Stephanie. She's also here.
Welcome.
When we, we have been coming, my wife and I have been coming to City of Yountville for lunch and dinner for 30 years. And we look forward to actually being residents of the city of Yountville. And we bought the property with the idea that, yes, we were interested in building a tasting room for our vineyards and winery. And we are also interested, well, actually, that's requested by the city, that there'd be a retail component there, that we should, the city would like to see us do retail of consumer products of some kind. And so we, and I happen to be the chairman and CEO of my corporation, a cookware company in the country. And so I'm happy to oblige and offer cookware, high-end cookware products to sell in this tasting room and retail showroom. Since we have been coming to Yountville for all these years for dinner in particularly, and we have to say we love the restaurants here in Yountville. And it is our intention to stay overnight here in Yountville. And it's not our intention to drive after having a generous amount of wine. So therefore, it is, it is our hope that we would actually have a, have an apartment here, have a residential unit here that we can enjoy. So that is actually our intention. And it is, and so we would take up at least one of the units, of the residential units for our own use. And we may or may not rent out the second unit. But I want to make known that when we purchase the property and we, for, the property is only 700, 7,100 square feet, and we paid a very hefty price for this property. And there was, with the consideration, that we'll be able to build a tasting room and two residential units. So I must respectfully insist that we be allowed to build the two residential units. And the tasting room as it stands, it's already, and the retail unit, is already smaller than what we are allowed, 25%. We're only building 19 and a half percent. So we feel that we have already compromised to a great degree and we really not able to compromise further. So we'd like to just make known our thoughts and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Would any other members of the applicant's team like to comment or shall we open it up to other members of the public? Okay, with that, I invite any other members of the public. I know we have some folks here that have presented statements by email, but you're certainly welcome to address your concerns live and on the microphone. Please.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Gates of Gates Estates, right next door, as you can see. I have several issues, but I have some solutions too, so that I'd like to present for your consideration. All the obvious, of course, is considered obstructive to me in trying to do business right next door with something, as you can see, that, they haven't drawn my windows right there on that wall, but they're right there. So of course, they're going to be behind a building now and almost all of my sun is gone. So however you want to picture that, building or whatnot, being as though my windows are behind the building at the end and then up here at the beginning. So whether it's morning or noon and even late in the day, it's kind of over for me. So that kind of makes my working environment not very pleasant. And that's where I, in that office is usually where I sit down and have the meetings with my clients. So that's just issue number one. The three back, three feet setback is still a problem for me personally because then they're going to put a trellis in that three-foot setback. And whether that's just wood or whether that's a green trellis, it gets closer to me. It's just continuing, the wall keeps moving in. So that's another one of my concerns. The trash on this side is right in the middle, kind of across from my backyard and Kathleen's backyard. So I know what that means and that's going to be a tough one. The mechanical equipment up on top and enclosed is what's, I think, that and the housing units on top is what's really giving this building the height that's causing the problem. One, I don't know, I can talk about basements later, but in solar, in fire access to the back of our building now is almost impossible. But if we were in trouble at the back of our building or the back of Kathleen's building with this building so close, you can't get firemen back there. I guess they can try and squirt over the building, but I don't know how that's going to work. But, so my solution or my idea, if I could present just an option or something that I think might make everybody happy, if you go back to the picture, if you can, of the three options?
Yeah.
That they presented to us on the parcel, when you slide us to the south side of the property line, them to the south side of the property, there you go. Okay, if you take any one of these options and you look over to this, to, I'm going to say the east side of the building where the covered parking is to the housing units, okay? If you take that away, those two, three parking, I think it's two or three, I can't read what exactly that is. I think it's two parking places that are covered, okay? If you took the two parking places off and say you went down to one housing unit on top or none on top, that takes all that space off the back. You're not touching their commercial space, which is why they're supposed to be there to begin with. Then you slide that back, they have got plenty of room for their existing parking, they've got plenty of room for their driveway, they've got their setback that they need, and they can redesign the front yard maybe a little bit, but I don't think they're going to need to. And then if you took just a long skinny area towards the back, instead of this parking coming all the way out and put their mechanical building or their mechanical space from on top back there, insulated it from sound and whatnot, and put their garbage to the back corner there, you keep all the garbage away from the residential, which would be me and Kathleen on the other side. They've got some residential on top, one unit, and if you turned it this way, that would shorten the building and then accommodate this space. Or delete the, or consider deleting the residential and the mechanical, putting the mechanical down as I suggested, sliding it back to this side as I suggested. And now we have a one-story building because you can take this whole top issue off, which then brings the sunshine back to us all on the other side and everybody can live happily ever after. So that's just one solution that...
If I can just ask, Sandra, are you able to use your pointer to show what Cindy is talking about in terms of the parking lots or if you maybe hand it to Cindy so she can explain?
No, I'm afraid I don't quite know.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not clear on which corners you're talking about.
All right.
And are you proposing this if the building stays on the north side or if it's moved to the south side?
If it's moved to the south side. This makes the whole situation work much better for them. If these, if this, these one, two parking places right here were deleted, okay? I can't read what this is and I can't read what this is. The whole building could then move back very easily since this whole space is gone. If you took this slot here, just a narrow, long piece there, and made that their mechanical space, that would take it off the top of the building, moving this whole structure back. It's away from my building, it's away from Kathleen's building, we've got sun again in the back, if you look at that. The residential, if the residential is changed, I don't know where the top story building is, but you could take the residential and make it all belong like this. He still gets views off his deck, building still gets the views from the street going north as they want it to have. You see this nice side of this building as they've designed it right here. You just don't have to have all that height for mechanical on top. And the residential underneath can be narrowed on top so that you don't have so much height towards the back. It comes up towards the middle more if you had just one residential unit. If you had none, now we only have one store, a one-story building, putting the mechanical to the back, sliding the building back, we solve all the problems that way. And I don't think that you'll have to do any mitigation with the setbacks. I think they're well within their setbacks once you slide that back if you do the measurements, if my calculations are right. You have a buffer between our two buildings and their two buildings. It doesn't seem to impact them a whole lot, I think. Or maybe they can mitigate that one more parking place to go all along this way and still have the room for the setback. It's just what I've kind of picked up from what everybody's been saying as a solution. Solar could still be put on the top of the building, fire access to our building's improved. Now we can get a fire truck or some, at least people down the side of that building and put hoses over the side if, should we ever have a problem, especially at the top of my building. I have a two-story, Kathy has a two-story. So if you ever had a problem there, I don't know how they're going to get back there. So that's, that's another option to think about. Let me see what else I have. Oh, the basement issue that they were talking about, that could even put the mechanical downstairs. It can be built. The green, I know that, as you are all aware, the green project over on Yountville Crossroad is proposing to put basements in there. It can be done, I've seen it done, and it works. So today, that can be done, even though the water table is high, I know, when we put pools in, the water comes out. But it can be done and there are processes for that. So maybe even the mechanical equipment could go down there and nobody has to listen to it. That could be an option as well. So I think that's everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And what I'll ask staff to do, because there are some issues unfortunately with your plan that we would have to address, what I'll ask is staff, if you could note some of the ideas and potential challenges or favorable on those ideas, once we get all the public comment, we can address those. Because we do have some issues with parking and how they relate to the housing units and things like that, so.
Okay.
But I appreciate you offering up those ideas and we'll, we'll see what happens. That's why we're trying to have this kind of dialogue. Maybe somebody has an idea that we haven't thought about yet and it can really work, so.
Okay. And one more thing I wanted to bring up that nobody's really addressed is 20 years ago, Ed Beard who owned the building, which is now Beard Family Trust as we know. What I want to point out is Ed made an agreement with the property owner back then, 20 years ago, that it was all right for him to make a notch. If you look at the property line, a notch has been made at my building to the back, to back of the front part there where my, right, there's the little notch right there. Okay. To put an air conditioning system in there, he agreed, the previous owner agreed to let Ed build that little stucco wall that matches my building and that's what's on, over that side of that is my air conditioning unit. If that gets taken out, his building's even closer to me. And that, that kick out is probably afoot. I tried to call the title department and find out if there's an existing easement that was developed between Ed Beard and the previous owner years ago, and I can't find one as of yet. So unless there's any other documentation, I'll see how you find it.
I'm getting a negative response from staff on that one.
Okay.
But we'll...
But it has been in use for 20 years, if that means anything.
Okay. Thank you for your ideas and comments. And like I said, we'll address, after we may hear some others that we need staff to address. So I invite any other members of the public to come forward now. Yes, please.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Braun. I live at 2080 Humboldt Street and it's the house that is most affected by this. Can we show the plan that, I'll keep going back to, no, not that one, right, no, the other one.
One more.
That one right there, okay. First of all, let me say, nobody wants to see this property redeveloped more than I do. I have lived across the side of that for the last 12 years and I've watched it just gradually, not gradually, it is just falling down. And I'm really glad that someone has finally stepped forward after all these years and has said, hey, I've got a plan for making something out of this. And I applaud that, it's really great. As for the design, I really like it. Does it fit Yountville? No. But then we also have a coffee shop that's in a caboose over here, so, you know. But I like it. My biggest issue, of course, as you've all know, is where it sits. And what I'd really like to point out to you is exactly how much of my house is being shaded. Now Faro is right, right now, a lot of it is shaded due to the fact that there's some overgrown trees that the previous owner and I have not really done anything about because most of the trees are on that side. To cut them down would certainly let more light back in there and we just simply haven't done that. What I'd really like to point out is if you start on the very east side of the house there, at that corner there, and you come in a few feet, there's a bathroom window there and it's about two feet square. If you can see, it is going to be the only window in that house there that is not covered up by this building. If you go along that wall there and come forward, there are four double hung windows there and a back door that has 16 squares of glass in it. That is covered by, it's a patio, it's this little porch, and it's covered by the roof. So it's already in shade. To pass that building in front of it is only going to make it that much worse. If you come across, yes, that wall right there, that is only six feet, two inches from the fence. There are three double hung windows there. Right now, they are shaded by all the overgrown trees from that property. Again, when that building passes in front of it, there's going to be no light into that bedroom whatsoever. If we go along that wall there, there are three more double hung windows there that will probably get certain amount of sunshine during the day and some light as the sun moves around. But that's only a certain amount of hours during the day. If we come across here, there's a big bay window there that's about six feet square. That is also going to get very limited sunshine as that sun moves around between these two buildings. And it will get some ambient light in the afternoon and that's about it. The rest of that house there moves along, there's a fireplace there, a wall, and then we hit the fence that separates my property from the Gates property there. we hit the fence that separates my property from the Gates' property there. From where his building starts to my fence of the Gates' property is 51 feet long, it is 26 and a half feet high. That is just, when you step out of my backyard, that's just nothing but a great big blank wall back there. It covers everything. I, I see his proposal here for what the sunlight looks like during the day and everything, but you know what, you really need to be in my house to see what it actually is. There's not a lot of sunlight that gets in there anyway, and to put this thing across there, we'll just, rest assured that there will never be any light back there. In that living room there, I have an art studio right next to that bay window, that's all going to be shaded off there, there won't be that much light there anyway. It does stay damp back there in the winter, and it's just what the house is because it's old, but to have this building 26 and a half feet up, the whole length of my house, I think as the design review board said, is grossly inappropriate. I don't think it can be there, I would like to see it flipped to the other side, I understand their objections, but I don't think there's anyone here that wants to step out in their backyard and see this thing. I like it, but I'm sure nobody really wants to stand up there and say, oh my gosh, isn't that pretty? It's not pretty. It needs to move. I'm going to be in perpetual shade there, especially during the winter, because we all know that winter runs into March, and in the summer, yes, it might give me a little bit of shade and respite from the heat back there, but for the most part, all that's going to get blocked off there, and that's not a pretty sight to look at, and I really, really would like the council to kick this back to the architect and the client and say, please flip to the other side, redesign it, do something else, but, and the three foot setback, that isn't enough, okay? I mean, we all know that six feet, two inches is a very short space, and just to add another three feet is simply not enough. I would like to see it moved, I really don't want to see it on that side, and it also continues on into the Gates' property, I understand that it does step down to, to one story there, but it will pass in front of her double doors that she has on her property there and that back patio, so she's right, all she's going to see is just a great big wall going up, and I'm sure none of you would ever want that in your backyard. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question to follow up your comments from the zoning and design review discussion. I think they asked, would you prefer being directly impacted, the impacts of a driveway next to your fence versus the impacts of a building next to your fence? And am I correct that you were saying of those two choices, the impacts of the driveway would be your preference over the mass of the building?
Yes, yes, it would be. Yeah, I understand there will be cars coming and going and gas fumes and that kinds of things, but I think that's a kind of a small price to pay to have the building moved. Again, like I say, I would like to see this property redeveloped, I really would, and I just like, don't want to put a whole damper on the whole thing here, but I just don't think it's appropriate in the residential neighborhood there at all.
Thanks. Are there other questions, Ms. Braun?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Just to, just to be clear, are all your opinions, would they stay the same if the top mechanical was removed and the maximum height was 20 feet instead of 27.6?
The, the problem with that is, I understand the mechanical room being moved, yes, it's just that the zoning review board also recommended an eight-foot wall back there, and if you just look at the rendering, it kind of looks like a prison wall, quite frankly, you know, I mean, really, it's just a solid wall that goes back there. To have it 20 feet, I've got a very, very narrow backyard, I've got a very, very narrow walkway between those back windows and that back fence there, and it's not like when you look over the fence, you say, oh, it's three feet, but it still goes up 20 feet. I'm just not happy with it at all.
Any other questions? Questions, Ms. Braun?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Beard, welcome.
I'm Linda Beard, and I'm representing Beard Family Trust. This is our property, we've been community members of Yountville since 1895. The house that Kathleen lives in, my grandmother purchased in 1925, it was located on the corner originally, actually where Cindy Gates' building is. And her living room, which is also part of Kathleen's art studio, was the original Yountville post office. The area that has floor-to-ceiling bookshelves in it was the original Yountville library. My grandmother was the first female post mistress in the United States here in Little Progressive Yountville. In 1952, that house was moved back, and she built a block structure on the corner, which had been the Yountville post office for many, many years until the new structure over by the community center was built. And at that point, my father and my grandmother remodeled that very ugly block building and built what Cindy's in now, which is a structure inside the block building and a structure on the exterior of the block building. I understand that my grandmother's house, which, I'm 57, and I've grown up almost all my life there, many, many memories, is not a gorgeous little gingerbread-style home, but it affords me an awful lot of memories. Kathleen's one of my best friends, she has lived there since my Grandpa John, which John Wickles, which is the second photograph in on the wall over here. Grandpa John passed away in 1999, we're actually towards the inn, and Kathleen moved in shortly after that, and has been there ever since, and she's been a friend of mine for over 30 years. Knowing that backyard well, both the courtyard for Cindy Gates, the backyard for Kathleen, the size, the height of the building, whether it be 26.5 feet or 20 feet, it's enormous. The other thing currently with the structure that's there now, with the driveway on that north side of the parcel, is a driveway, therefore if we had a fire issue or emergency issue, that could be access to the back of our family property for protection. If a structure is put in that close, there's one small gate between Grandma's house and where Cindy's house, Cindy's office is located, to go through, there's basically, it develops almost no access whatsoever, so there is a fire hazard, and that's very, very much a concern, especially since Grandma's house was originally built in the 1870s. It's old, but it has had a lot of love in that house. So I just like you, for me, my dad's mother's family came to St. Helena in 1852, the Beard family came here in 1895, we've been here a long time, we've seen a lot of changes, I support so many of them, but this is just not working for us, and I, I really hope on a human side, you look at it realistically and also on a practical side, it does impact what we have, and I also feel that it will affect if someday, which I'm not planning on it ever, but if I decide to sell the property, or if my children or their children do, I honestly believe that if that structure went in so close to our property line, it will devalue our property too. So I don't know if you have any questions, or...
Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions, Ms. Beard? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public? Let's, let's give everybody at least a first chance, and if no one else, then you're up for round two. Any others, yes?
Hello, Rob Winterberg? My comments go to the housing units, I actually liked Ms. Gates' suggestions about reducing the housing units on the property. It's a really unusual property, this is the second kind of permutation, we had another thing come in, and it was the same problem, trying to cram retail in two units on that property. Now, we have the two units on the property because it's a requirement of the town, and mostly because we're trying to find housing for the workers. However, the applicant himself has just stated that he plans to reside in one of the units when he is visiting, and the second unit he may or may not rent out, which really indicates to me that we're not actually providing any added housing to our community or to potential renters, and we're just providing housing for wealthy landowners who are coming in. So my, I like the idea of reducing the two units so there'd be no residential on the property, therefore reducing the height of the units, and then that would give you a lot more flexibility regarding parking and other requirements to move it to the south side, thus making everybody happy, except maybe the landowner. But he could increase his retail size because of that.
Thank you, thank you, Rob. Again, I, I ask staff just to jot down how we can evaluate the impacts if either one unit or both housing units are removed, what that does to parking, what that does to retail space, just as a, an option.
I'm happy to respond now if you want...
Let's see if we get any more questions, and then I'm going to let you guys respond till you can't respond anymore.
I have a whole list of things to respond to.
Any other first-time commenters? Yes, please.
I'm Peter Jacobson, I live at 22 Talent Lane, out on the edge of town, and I'm going to actually be in support of the way it's arranged right now. I know the Changs through their daughter originally, I met them through organic gardening and then eventually met the Changs, and so I can attest to the fact they do love Yountville, and they are here because Yountville, the town itself, and they care a lot about it. And I do too, I've lived here for 30 years, and now I'm a permanent resident here, and I walked that piece of property, oh, Kathleen and Ms. Beard, those were very passionate presentations, and actually I was moved by them, and I certainly think that, and I certainly can understand your perspective on things, and Kathleen, I appreciated her mentioning the fact that any improvement to the property is going to be an improvement, because I have walked by there, and the trees are very high there, in fact, there's trees in their backyard as well. And the staff report noted, which was stunningly done by the way, that there's already a variance on that property. One of the reasons that one of those pieces is so shaded is because it's got a six-foot clearance instead of the standard five or 15 would have, might have been. But anyways, I, if you go down the street and look at the property and you see the north-facing thing, just, it's, it actually fits into the curvature of the street, the street is oddly curved that way, and that's why it seems so pinched when the buildings are. And I also was very upset when they built next to my property, and so testified they didn't want any changes. But I realize now, after they built next to my property and a lot of housing has gone in, that I've learned to live with it, some of the people that moved in are best friends now, and the new, the new landscape fits in nicely. So I'd like to think that depending on the modifications you all decide on, that at least the flow of the city through the town and the way it looks when you walk down the street, does, it flows now, I think, and doesn't appear as chopped up as it might be if you've got little driveways going and repairs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did see a hand in the back, yes, please. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Allen. For the past 20 years, I've lived here in Yountville at 1876 Heritage Way. I am here to support the Heston Project, and I should disclose that the Chang family are personal friends, and I represented Mr. Chang when he purchased the property, and I was involved in many of the meetings relevant to the project.
Sorry, Barbara, could you just pull that microphone down a little bit so that people can hear you on the record?
I'm trying to speak up. I think we all like to have a lot of sunshine and privacy at other people's expense. Unfortunately, we live in a town, we all have to live together. There are non-conforming properties, but a commercial property, there's going to be give and take. Improving this property is no-brainer, the way it is, it's not acceptable for anybody in the neighborhood. I am puzzled, that's beside the point, I am puzzled by some of the comments that Ms. Kathleen Braun submitted to the town council in an email dated December 28. She says in essence that the Heston owners and architect did not consult with neighbors of the project before making their presentation to the ZDRB on December 13. In fact, on December 6, I attend a meeting which the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Chang and the architect, Esala, spent more than two hours discussing the project with Ms. Linda Beard and Mr. Michael Applegate. Ms. Beard owns two rental properties adjoining the project on the north, Ms. Braun rents a house on one of those properties. I am also aware that Mr. Chang contacted Mr. Thomas Keller, owner of the property to the south. He invited Mr. Keller to the December 6 meeting, unfortunately, Ms. Keller was out of the country and could not join us. During the December 6 meeting, I recall Ms. Beard saying that her tenant in the rental house would be very pleased to have the rental units next door replaced by the Heston facility. We heard nothing further from Ms. Beard or Ms. Braun until the ZDRB meeting on December 13. Ms. Braun may raise the objection to the Heston proposal at that meeting. So subsequent to that ZDRB meeting, Mr. Esala met with Ms. Beard and Ms. Braun on December 20. He explained the practical limitations of moving the building from the north to the south side of the property, as had been suggested at the ZDRB meeting. It is unfair for Ms. Braun to suggest the Heston people have ignored their neighbors. In my view, Mr. Chang and his associates have made a determined, good-faith effort to put this project proposal together. It is a very challenging lot, and they have, they are doing everything to follow the rules of the law. I believe this project would have a positive aesthetic impact on the neighborhood and Yountville as a whole. Mr. Chang is an experienced and successful entrepreneur. His Meyer cookware company is the largest of its kind in the U.S. and the second largest in the world. Heston wines are highly regarded, as indicated by having been served at a White House state dinner. This project will bring to Yountville high-profile, top-quality wines and cookware that will be appealing to both visitors and the locals. There is no question in my mind, this project will prove to be a significant benefit for the continuing commercial development of Yountville. I urge you to support this project as planned. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Any particular comments? Hold on just a sec, any particular comments about, any, okay, thanks. I'll just first ask if we can have anybody else to speak for the first time, and then if anybody wants to readdress the council, you're certainly welcome to do that. Are there any others that can, would like to speak on this issue? If not, originally, Ms. Gates, you were going to step up, I know Ms. Braun also wants to speak, so Ms. Gates, you first and then, you're welcome to come back up.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the obvious, which I got so involved in trying to create just a mitigation for the, for the situation, but the one thing that I think that we all need to listen to is, should the building remain where it's proposed to be right now? And we do have a 26, 20 and a half foot cement wall constructed there, the property value, needless to say, on both parcels, the building I'm in and the building Kathleen's in, is going to be grossly negatively affected. The, would you buy a house with a cement wall, 27 feet tall? I mean, you just wouldn't, you know, three feet away from your wall or your back fence, you just wouldn't, with no sunlight in the yard and no, you just couldn't. So I, I hate to say that to one Beard, but that would be an impact to the property. Given all of this activity and all these things on this site, it just seems to me that the logical, logical answer would be to move the structure or redesign it to the south side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Braun?
I would like to clarify a few things in that email that Barbara Allen just mentioned. First of all, yes, when I heard through the grapevine that this was going to be redeveloped and Heston Wine was going to go in there, I thought, yes. and Heston wine was going to go in there, I thought, yes, this is great. The second thing is, I was not invited to that first meeting at all. I didn't hear from anybody. So that she says, he tried to get in touch with everybody, is, I'm sorry to say, I didn't hear. Nobody invited me to this meeting at all. And the first time that I saw what the design was and where it was going to go is when I went to the design review board meeting, and I was kind of taken aback by the fact that, oh my God, it originally sat on a zero-property line. The design review board said at the very end, when they said that where it sits was grossly inappropriate, and that they should get together with the residents of the neighborhood and discuss this. We did meet with Mr. Esala, Linda, and I did only, and he showed us the revisions for what he was doing, the three-foot setback, and at the time I said, we will not say no to your design. We will discuss it. I felt that we owed him the courtesy of standing in the backyard, Linda and I, and thinking, will this work or will this not work? And we did discuss it at length. In fact, we almost beat it to death. We discussed it so much. And we simply came to the conclusion that it just wasn't going to work, not even with a three-foot setback, not even with all the pretty trellises or anything. But as I state again, the first time I saw this was at the design review board meeting. Had I been invited to the December 6 meeting beforehand, I would have voiced my objections then, but I was not invited. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else? And as long as this may be new information, clarifying information?
I'm clarifying something.
Yeah, because we really, we've heard both of you and your representations about the meeting, but go ahead.
Okay. I did not say that the December 6 meeting was inviting everybody. They invited the two owners. And Ms. Brown's email said they didn't talk to any of the neighbors. That's the clarification.
Okay, thank you very much. The property owners being Ms. Beard and Mr. Applegate on the adjacent properties.
Mr. Mayor, before you close the matter, I would think it's appropriate to hear from the applicant as the final speaker.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any more public comment, and I believe the public has had their opportunity, so I would invite any members of the applicant's team to come back up. And then we will also hear from staff to address some of the concerns that have been brought up. If you'd like to wait until we hear from staff, in case, let's do that. Let's hear from staff first on any clarifications to some of the either ideas, comments, concerns that have been addressed by the public.
There were a couple of ideas I heard. One was concern about firefighting the Gates Estate building or the residence if the building were in this location, and I don't think that would be a problem. And the reason is, this is a very deep two-story building, and the fire department needs to get to the rear of the property. It can't fight the fire from the street. These are smaller one-story structures that very likely can be.
They're both two stories each.
At least part of those buildings are two stories each, so.
Okay. But given the fact that they're not very deep, they likely could be fought from the street. That's perhaps something we can get greater clarification on.
So Napa County standard of the property is the building within 150 feet of the right-of-way. They stay out in the right-of-way and run hose.
So even if the building was on the south side, they clearly would have less obstruction, but you're saying typically-
They're not going to drive a truck down that driveway.
Typically, they would stay on the street and go through the side yards to get to the backyard.
And let me also clarify, the town owns a ladder truck, and the ladder truck would not position from the driveway. It would position from either Washington or Humboldt to fight any of the properties along that particular area from an aerial assault. So I don't think firefighting is an issue on either location. The 14-foot, and I will confirm the planning directors, that really is the minimum that we've been able to achieve, and that's primarily just from, more from an emergency medical response and those types of things.
You're talking about the drive aisle 14 feet wide?
The drive aisle.
Right. Okay, Sandra, if you could continue.
Another issue I heard was regarding the encroachment of this wall in the agreement between the previous property owner. There was a survey conducted of this property in October of '11 by Riker Spence, and an easement was not shown. So that was under an agreement that wasn't recorded, it appears. And that's the issue that resolves that problem.
Well, but what is the result of that problem? Does that encroachment need to be removed?
Well, it's encroaching on the property. The applicant had originally wanted to remove it. They've backed off on that. They're allowing her to keep it, but it does technically encroach on their property. And they could pursue without an easement, so they could pursue removal of that if they so desire.
Regardless of where the building is? It's technically on their property, and it's kind of a handshake agreement from years ago?
Exactly.
And at the time, the application is granting that exception to let it stay.
Okay. Another issue was raised was regarding this enclosed trash enclosure. It's fully enclosed with the building, within the building with no openings facing the north, so it's really not an issue there. Although that's a minor issue, I just wanted to state.
Yeah, so the access, it's technically outside the building, but the north side, as it's proposed, is closed. The access to that trash area is through the stairway?
No, it's actually fully enclosed within the building. It's within a closed-doored area, so be-
But the access to it is underneath the stairs?
Oh, it's correct, from about this area. Come in, the door is south-facing, so you could go pull something out.
So the only outdoor trap enclosure is proposed is in the southeast corner?
Correct.
And that's an enclosed?
An roofed structure. Okay. Now, moving to some of the bigger-
Can you though also confirm that trash pickup would not be a vehicle driving onto the property back to that corner location, or do you have any idea?
You're probably going to have to tote to the street, because there are in toters, and they're not generating a great deal of waste.
Okay. So that addresses the concern about the property owner immediately on the other side of that fence? Okay.
Okay, so now, some of the issues associated with the height. And the suggestions in the staff report were not endorsements of any one solution or the other. We were just raising what some of the issues were and possible ways to solve them. And one is the, this part of the building that's above 20 feet, 20 to 27 and 1/2 square feet, it's the mechanical room. The applicant suggested perhaps he could enclose it within fencing, which would take away some of that mass. We've suggested that perhaps it could be brought to ground level and enclosed. At the current configuration, there's no room for that. I'll address it again with Ms. Gates' suggestion that it be moved, but there's also the possibility that it be put in a basement. We know that there is a basement at North Block Hotel, the former Hotel Luca, and it can be done in town, even though we have a high-water table. Even if that were removed, we're looking at, in this location, a 20-foot-tall building just three feet from the property line. And that's why staff suggested it may warrant looking at that two-unit housing requirement. As I stated, the residential unit in a multi, in a mixed-use development such as this doesn't always meet the need of supplying worker housing. And as you recall, the two residential units that were required for the rezone were required under two different standards. One was the loss of the existing housing on the site, and the other was to approximate the intended employees of the new use. And if there aren't employees living in those units, the intended purpose of the units isn't as strong as it was when it was rezoned, so that issue is simply raised. If we do-
We did not obligate the rental of those units to workforce housing.
No, we didn't.
We have not done that on other properties either.
Their market. Their market rate.
It's suggested, but it's purely up to the property owner to decide that.
Correct. And they're not replacing qualified low-income units. They were market-rate units that happened to rent for lower amounts.
When the council, my recollection, approved the rezoning, it was definitely concerned about the loss of the, at the time, was it six units?
There's four units.
Four total? But there's the cottage and then the-
There's a single-family residence at the street and a triplex at the rear.
Oh, three in the back. And we all understood, it was completely nonconforming, could never build it like that today, but we said we wanted to require two units to make up for those units that were being lost. And we have had opportunity in the town where off-site units have been allowed when a parcel hasn't been able to meet the requirement for their housing unit on-site, they can provide it off-site somewhere else in town. That has been allowed.
It's feasible, and that's very difficult. My whole point was that with a rezon of a property from residential to commercial, there are two general plan policies that apply. One is the replacement housing that is lost, and the other is to, in consideration of the new employee housing that's needed for the commercial use. That's all. So now, let's discuss moving it to the, to the south side and the different options. If we eliminate the two residential units, the building potentially could be pushed back, but there are three parking spaces here, and only two are for the residential unit. So that sixth unit in the lot would have to be provided somehow. It's possible that it could be accessed perpendicularly from the drive aisle, so that it isn't as deep as it is when the building is pushed back, and if that's the case, perhaps the mechanical equipment could be tucked back down here.
But that's also your only handicap access parking space on the property.
Currently, that's the one that's designated.
That has nothing to do with the apartment units. That has to do with the commercial use.
That's correct. And that's a van-accessible space, which is essentially the width of two parking spaces, 98.
It doesn't mean that you can't relocate the handicap access parking to potentially the rear portion and then trade parking?
Perhaps if this trash enclosure were relocated, but we're talking about really specific items that perhaps, and can work, perhaps it can't, it needs to be sketched out on paper, and we know it's a very tight site, and we still need to fit six parking spaces, one that's handicap, we need to work with the mechanical equipment, and we still need the trash enclosure. So I don't know that that's an easiest solution as it was represented, although it may be, and it does certainly lower the height of the building.
And the handicap spaces require to be the closest to the door, and-
Also, it can't, it really can't be relocated to the rear part?
It can't be swapped out on the back. And the other, the point is, those two, the top two show a 25-foot-wide drive aisle. That's, 24 feet is actually the minimum for perpendicular parking as a backup drive aisle, so that can't really be reduced at all.
Right. This is shown at 15, and it needs to, so we're, I don't see how it can all fit.
So if I can ask, and I'll certainly invite the council to ask additional questions if I don't cover everything, is it fair to say all of the shading issues are mitigated by moving the building to the south side of the property line? We don't have to necessarily, and this is still up for council discussion, have to worry about the fact that it's 27 and 1/2 or 29 or 20 feet high? Because you're now, you're all the way at the south end. There's no shade impact, there's no massing impact, even with the proposed two apartments and mechanical on top.
I think that's very fair to state, although we don't have a study proving that at this point. But we're talking about a 14-foot setback. When, if it were a, let's just consider, before it was rezoned, when it was old-town historic, you could have a single-family residence that was 30-foot tall or 28-foot tall, set back just five feet from the property line, so.
We'd be having the same conversation.
We would be.
So what is the south side setback if the building is moved to?
I think it's showing as three feet, although it's too small for me to be, so it's the same three foot setback.
But basically, it's opposite parking lot at Edward James Courtyard, so there's no real direct impact on the south neighbor like there is on the north neighbor.
Correct. Right.
And if you, if I could, if you look at option three, it could achieve with a redesign of the front approach and with the council's consideration of allowing a different front setback than 15. Most of what the applicant's trying to achieve and everything else with a redesign of the front allowing for, as Sandra or Bob was pointing out, a five-foot setback could be achieved, and that option keeps most everything, and it could be, it needs to be redesigned, because it's, the other thing that I will point out is the architect has proposed a mirror, just a flipping, and if you look at, Sandra, if you could kind of show what's in the encroachment in option three, just with your-
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back. No, I think we want to talk about option one, where it's encroaching into the front setback.
Right.
This shows the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, option one, I'm sorry. Yes. That, you know, if the architect and the applicant were to do a little qualitative work and the council gave them some feedback that said, yes, we're willing to not require a 15-foot setback, I believe almost everybody's concerns can be addressed if that's the one area that the council might be willing to have some flexibility on the site.
So I do want to try to keep this a little bit more directed, question and answers with staff, and then we'll discuss after hearing again from the applicant. So Councilor Dornbecker, did you want to get any clarification?
Yes, please, because I'm not an architect, and in looking at these plans, on the, on these options, does it, I know it shows the driveway flipped, does it show the building flipped as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And let me show you what that would mean, is that this-
So that the, the part of the building that the applicant wants to have be towards the driveway would be towards the driveway? Is that correct?
Correct.
You would see it driving south on Washington as opposed to north on Washington?
Yeah.
Okay. Perhaps it could simply just be moved south, since there's nothing in Edward James Courtyard that would block that view, because otherwise, we're looking at this elevation facing, being the prominent view from Washington Street.
Well, you're going to have that as a prominent view one direction or the other.
Right.
If you put it, if you flip it as they have in their three options, at least the bottom portion is blocked by the landscaping and fencing of the Edward James.
And I guess what I would say, I'm trying to suggest is there may be an option four, which is provided the feedback and the general massing that you're seeing in option one, the architect may be able to go back and create something that is more reflective of their design presence, but fits within the space guidelines that the council is saying that they like out of option one, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, fair enough. And we're going to, because we're still in the public comment part of this, I want to just stay a little more focused on, any more clarifying questions of staff about the comments? Do you have any other answers to some of the public comments so far?
I have just one observation about, and these may be negotiable items, that were during the testimony raised as not preferred, but were actually built in as amenities, and that's the sound barrier wall of eight feet. It doesn't have to be eight feet, and it was a masonry wall that was intended as a sound attenuation wall. Could be lower. It doesn't have to be eight feet.
You're talking about on the north side or the rear, east side?
It's going to be around-
The entire?
Yeah. And the others are these trellises. These were added to lower the visual mass of the building, and I think that's the purpose they were serving, to try to bring the building down to where you're only paying attention to what's at eye level. You tend to not look beyond a feature like that.
Okay.
So those are both, seem to be, one of the, one of the people speaking did not prefer them.
And we have other parcels in town where, including our community center, if I remember correctly, we have established eight feet for a rear wall to mitigate the vehicle light and noise impacts on the other side of that wall when it's residential, which is the case here.
There.
So you're saying that there may be some flexibility on the height of that wall on the north side of this property?
Well, elsewhere used in the RSC was at the Somersden, and it was, started out at six feet, but because of grade differential to the ground, the natural slope, it, I think it got to about seven and 1/2 at one end, but other parts of it are six feet.
And the wall is required when it abets residential, so it's not technically required at the Gates Estates property. And we've heard from some of the residents there that they don't want an eight-foot wall, so I suggested in the staff report that if we do an eight-foot wall, we get the consent of both those owners and tenants before doing that. Otherwise, a six-foot wall would meet the town standard.
Or you could tier it so that it was lower on the west side, nearest the commercial or retail business, and then higher for privacy and screening when it gets to the residential property.
But Ms. Brown, I think, has stated that would create a prison effect for her, because she's just six feet from that line?
Yeah, and that's still negotiable, but, okay. So you think you covered all the questions and options that were presented by the public? Okay. I invite the applicant and Mr. Esala to come back and make any other public-
Just a couple of clarifying comments. One was about the driveway. Initially, when we met with the fire department, they were looking for a 20-foot- Initially, when we met with the fire department, they were looking for a 20-foot-wide driveway, and because of the constricted site, they eventually agreed to the 14 feet, but that was as narrow as they were going to go. If the driveway is flipped to the north side, there is an encroachment of that wall that was pointed out, so that would have to be taken out so that we can get the driveway as far north as possible, so that we don't lose additional space for where the building would have to be if it's shifted to the south side. Mrs. Cindy Gates commented about her windows being covered. In actual design of the building, we were concerned about those, and so the setback of the building at the upper left-hand corner is actually 15 feet plus an additional seven feet, and that...
Yeah, it's actually a portable mic, if you could take it with you, so... Thank you.
Those windows are actually here. And so we set the building further back here so as to clear the view of those windows. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did take that into consideration, because that building is even closer to the property line than the adjacent house. As you can see, it's about maybe three feet or four feet away from the property line. And the trellises that we added to the back of the building, they really have no impact on that corner building. As you can see on the site plan, they're set, and we centered them on the courtyard. That's where Kathleen lives, so as to actually, you know, have some design effect on that back courtyard, as though it was part of that courtyard. So a lot of these little considerations went into these mitigating factors in order to minimize the impact. And the final thing that I want to add is that we still have two strips of landscaping on the south side, on either side of the driveway, that we can give up, which would give an additional five, it would make it a five-foot setback. So we can still move the building south by about two feet to bring it to where the residential setbacks ordinances are.
And that still leaves you the 14-foot drive aisle to the south side?
That would leave us 14 feet, but no landscaping at all. It would just be 14 feet from fence to building, and then all of the landscaping that's there now would be thrown to the north side of the building.
Does that, though, eliminate your pedestrian access to the building from the rear parking lot?
No, because our access is actually directly from the parking lot to the back of the building, underneath the residential units.
Okay, was there anything else you wanted to add to your comments, or shall we start our discussion here?
Well, and finally, I want to say that, you know, I think if you go towards the option of not having the residential units, from discussions that I've had with our clients, they will probably abandon the project, because they're not considering that as an option.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last chance for the public, yes. Rob, I'm not sure why you've held it till now, but...
No, 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 because I can't speak.
You're still welcome, okay.
I can't speak. Rob Anglin, 1891 Mulberry Street. And not to complicate things, but I can maybe give you one more option to consider, and that is to take the housing units from the top of the building and then build them on top of the parking in the back. So essentially, you'd still have your parking, but you'd have the two units on top of the parking. What that would do is, would you, Sandra, would you show me the picture that shows the north wall? So, and can I have this? How's this work? Which button?
Be careful where you point that, please, Rob.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I see, okay. So what I'm proposing is that this, this area here would be the top of the wall, which would be the same as the height of the Gates building along there, and so this would be the height of the building, more or less, as it comes to the back. That, coupled with the architect's suggestion that the building move to the south.
I think it's actually your cellphone, if you have one on, that's impacting the wireless, yeah. Thank you.
That coupled with...
It really does do that, yes.
Still doing it? Okay, it's your cellphone? Oh, okay.
Now you're, all the mics pick it up.
Okay. So if, if you did do that, you would drop the building to the height that I showed you on this elevation and on that rendering. I'm not sure if this is possible at all, but if you also move the building two feet to the south, you would have a side yard of, I think, five feet now, and you would have a traditional six-foot fence along the property line. You know, I think that some things could be done to dress up this elevation. It is sort of a commercial-looking blank wall, but I think that the height would be less of an issue if you could actually move this to the back of the property. And right now, that, that, three triplex is two stories right now. So anyway, it's just something else to consider. If, if you do decide that maybe that this orientation is something that would be preferable to flipping it, I know the architect did flip it, just mirrored it, so there hasn't been any consideration into how those spaces work and that. So that'd have to be a refinement if you choose to go with the south, but this is another option, keeping it on the north. Thanks.
Thank you very much, thanks for your expertise. She threw it in the trash. I guess I forgot to warn everyone at the beginning to turn off their cellphones. So, yes, one last time, and then we will be closing the public hearing, but...
I was just thanking you for the suggestion. We actually did another option, which I haven't sent up to the planning department, where we did set the residential units as a separate building in the back of the property, just as was suggested, and it just doesn't work. Physically, you cannot bring the building down to the ground, put the staircase, connect it up, and not lose parking space. So we did see that as a option. In fact, we discussed it with the neighbors, that, you know, maybe that was an option. And we tried it, and again, the space just isn't there to work out the parking, the turnaround, the stairs coming down in the back parking area. So that's really not a viable option, although I appreciate the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I am confident to say I'm going to close the public hearing now. I appreciate all of your feedback and your willingness to be patient and hear each other and respect each other's opinions, because we clearly have some differing perspectives on this item. So as we begin our deliberations as a council, I do want to give the council any, one last chance, if there's any question of staff, and staff specifically. If there are any questions, if not, I will go ahead and ask for a discussion. And I'll start, Councilmember Mueller, do you have any initial comments you'd like to discuss? I don't want to necessarily hear a final decision on this. At this point, I'd like it to be more of an open discussion with the council.
I'll take that to mean stream of consciousness, so I can get through my notes here. Just got to hit on whatever I have. I certainly, on the residential units, I believe that I would really like to see those. We've taken away four, maybe five, depending on how that split apartment was. This is something that's important to the property owner. Personally, I don't care whether, who lives there. It's housing stock, and it's not a matter of, we don't have any. You start, you know, making little cuts here and there in our housing stock, and you know, you can move to, the whole place is a commercial zone eventually. So housing stock, I think, is important, plus it's important to the owner. So I would like to maintain those two residential units. Also, I really like how the owner is very concerned about the retail. It's, everyone knows, I always have a bee in my bonnet about that, too. So if we can get to 25%, great. I mean, that's really where I would like to get, and I'm really excited about some high-end cookware. I don't cook, but I do drink wine, so... Also, I think that I am most flexible, from everything I've heard, on this 15-foot setback. I mean, if you just look at the east side of Washington, almost all the businesses are, you can step off the sidewalk right into a door someplace. Ranch Market is probably the furthest setback. I'd like for them to double their building size and come to the sidewalk, too. So I'm very flexible with that 15-foot setback. I think that most of the discussion is really around the north or the south part. I would really like, I, well, first I'll make a comment to the owner. Don't think you're special, there's never been anything that's come to us that we rubber-stamped the first day it showed up. Don't give up here, let's continue to work here, we're going to get someplace. We always do, makes everybody kind of happy. So, you know, I think some type of redesign, and I am not an architect, I'm not going to design it for you, but you've heard lots of comments, some type of redesign where the building does move closer to the existing parking lot. It's really, I think, going to make a big difference in the overall project. Again, I know the staff, I would definitely give them a lot more. They do know about water table here, but I've talked to a soils engineer, and I have a pool. I've heard that it actually varies all over town. It is going to cost you more to do that, but I'm okay with basements. I grew up in Kansas, we had tornadoes, so basements are fine, I'm fine with me. If that works at all for you, I would consider that. You're going to get a lot more space. Let's see. I also want to just, you know, mention the, the design a little bit. I know that's, once we get through all this stuff, everyone's going to be, you know, talking about this building. Personally, I think, you know, having a contemporary design as a bit of an accent here in town, I'm fine with that. I think this can be very interesting, very interesting to the town, but we really have to make it be in context with the town. And so whatever that final design is, especially in terms of massing and height and things like that, and also the, the design elements, so that'll be a fun project, I think, for your architect. They always like those kinds of things, anyway. So I'm fine with the overall contemporary design. Let me see. Parking, I definitely don't want to really cut things short on parking. I'm really glad to hear that there's going to be two additional spaces in the front. It may not have been what our forefathers really wanted, to put all this parking in the back, but that's really how we have it, pretty much the town's setup. We don't have any, you know, big municipal lots that people kind of go into. So that, that is our design, and that is our, kind of a bit of our rural look, that we hide as many cars as we can. And maybe when we get further down the line, I do want to talk about a parking plan at some point. I know that a member of ZDRB brought that up, and we just always struggle with that, and we can discuss that later. It's, you have your employees, but they always like to park someplace else. So anyway, we can get to that. So overall, I, did I kind of address everything sufficiently? I don't, you know, I think we are going to probably need a redesign, hearing everybody's comments, so let's, you know, see what we can do to get there.
Yeah, so one of the other points was just the building massing in general, but I think your solution to that is, is it encouraging the relocation to the south side of the parcel?
Yeah, I, I think that we've heard enough, and I, I've really heard that it's not a deal killer for the, the project owner. And, you know, this is, it's in context to the Gates building, but it looks a little high to me, so that's where I like kind of the basement design. But I'm really going to reserve final, and I don't want to change everything at the end, but it really needs to be in context to this part of town and overall in town. I'm not ready for, you know, everything in town's one-story, and we're putting a 60-story skyscraper in, even though some places do that, and it's interesting. I think it needs to be in context, and I think the architect knows what that means. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I'll do my best. This is, this is a lot of complicated concepts and a lot of emotional activity going on with regards to this project. And I'm going to start off by saying thank you to everyone who participated and brought your comments forward. I mean, this is, this is what makes a community great, is when we can sit and talk and try to reason and discuss the issues with, with what's going on. So it's really enlightening, and for me to learn a little bit about this as well. I like the project, I, I, you know, I saw the diagram beginning of this evening after I'd looked at it a couple times in the packet, and I like it. And I want to go back to something Sandra said, and that was with regards to, with regards to urban planning, and where it's situated in the north end, actually, when you come around that corner, and I just think about myself, which I don't drive very often through town, but even walking through town, it is, it would be more striking, and it would have that open space from Beard, which the north end presents itself better. That said, I am open to further discussion and review about whether or not the south side would be a better option, unless the applicant can find some way to lower the size or the height of the building. I'm not sold on the fact that we can't, or that a basement couldn't be built in this structure, and that might do quite a bit for reducing some of the size and massing, and I would encourage you to explore that, because I really think the north end, since you already have a two-story piece of, two-story, three resident units in the back, having a two-story property, as long as it's not overbuilt and 28, 29 feet high, you know, it can be done, it can be done right. And given that there is potentially a landscape elimination option to bring the property back further, and I would be flexible with regards to, I believe there's an additional setback opportunity on the north side. I think the residential is five feet, but given that there's a landscaping option that could be eliminated to move the property further south, maybe the north side of the project still works. And I'm, I'm just encouraging the applicant to go and to look at those options. I mean, you put a couple things together, a couple feet here and a couple feet there, and it may, it may actually appease the residents on the north side, who I respect everything that came forward from, from Ms. Beard, her family, Ms. Brown, and obviously Cindy Gates. I'm very comfortable if we did move to the south side of the property with the setbacks and the flexibility, that we could allow that, given the master and development plan, so I'm open to that. With regards to the residential units, I fully respect the applicant's request to retain those. Gosh, what a wonderful thing to have your business and be able to live on top of it, on, at your leisure. I would, I'd support that. I don't think we should eliminate the residential, although the, the issue there may be ultimately they don't have as much commercial as they like, but, you know, there's a little bit of a negotiation in all of this. I was pleased to hear, and I just want to make sure that we do follow up, and I know we will, because we're pretty thorough, with regards to the public safety issue, on whether or not they can turn in, and 14 feet is an appropriate width. I don't know how negotiable the fire department is, but maybe you get an extra foot or two to move it a little further south. And lastly, I guess I would summarize my comments by saying, you know, if you can only just go down. And I'm not sure how you do that, maybe you just, you know, you dig into the ground a bit and see if you can drop a couple feet, and it might appease the residents of the north, because I like it, and I, and I can see how it would be an enhancement to the town, not just because it's a very interesting-looking structure, but also what it would bring in terms of additional commercial elements to the town. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you. I wanted to add my compliments. I really like the design, I think it's very attractive. I like the idea of introducing modern design on our main street in Yountville. But that leads me to my conclusion that it actually, I think, is more compatible if you do move the building south and put the driveway on the north side. And maybe that means that on the side facing the driveway, you might need to do some additional, you know, architectural features. But nonetheless, I think leaving the building facing the south, but having the driveway on the north and adding additional architectural features to complement, you know, as people drive in to park. I totally support keeping the residential component. I like the idea that the owners will be in residence from time to time. And, but I want to make sure that if you do the second unit, that you do not use it as a vacation rental on a temporary basis for people, and that it be over 30 days. It has to be rented for 30 days and over. I am very flexible on the 15-foot setback from the front of the property, because I, too, feel that, you know, I was just in France, and everything's right on the streets, and it doesn't bother me at all. And I, too, wish that the ranch market were done... And I, too, wish that the Ranch Market were double the size and closer to the sidewalk. So, I think with all of those, taking those into consideration, I also think that setting the, the building on the south part of that parcel will alleviate the feeling of the mass, and especially, obviously, to the people on Humboldt. But I think that it will, you know, stand out, and it also is a little more compatible with the architecture in the Edward James property. So, all in all, that's, that's the way I see to go forward. And welcome, you know, welcome to come and be, you know, a resident as much as possible, and I think that we'd be very happy to have this lovely building.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Well, I want to back up and touch on something that Councilwoman Mueller said. I'm going to paraphrase it, which is, I think what you said is, "It's not personal, it's business," kind of a statement. It's not a unique process to go through, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of sitting here laughing about it, because we've got two members of our ZDRB here, and about eight months ago, I came to them, trust me, I like being on this side rather than that side, to do some renovation of my house, and my neighbors wanted to keep a very tall wall without any windows, because they wanted as much privacy as possible. And now, we're often in the opposite situation. I don't have a lot of hair for that reason. So, it's, it's ironic, if nothing else. My issue, main issue, is not really the height of the building. Our regulations say 30 feet. I mean, this building's within that regulation. So, one of my responses would be, if I was the property owner, "What's the problem? I'm under the specific regulations that you put in place." And so, I agree with that part. My biggest problem is just, and this is the exact right picture to look at, is we don't want to do a mirror flip of this, because if we see that from the Beard Plaza side, it's really not that attractive. It's just a, it's a concrete wall with a couple of windows on it. And I really like Councilwoman Dornbecker's suggestion, is the idea of having to flip it. What we see here is the most attractive part of the building. I do think that there is a solution there of moving that to the south side. It would be able to keep the height. It really assuages a lot of the issues that the neighbors might have. And I really, I really look at most of these issues as, yeah, we've got the rules, but what's best for Yountville, and what's best for everybody? So, yes, there's a 15-foot setback on the front, but it being at eight feet, that's not going to kill anybody. If it's, if it's a property that is a budding, a commercial property next to another commercial property, I don't care if there's a two-foot planter strip there. There can be zero there. It's, it's, this is not going to matter. So, two feet, I think that we should look at those specific rules, not be bound by them quite as much as the very specific rules say, and say, "What is the best solution that works for everybody?" I was fairly adamant, ironically enough, I guess this is where you contradict yourself, about the previous property owner who wanted to rezone, and then, I think, wanted to skirt the rules and not have to live by the resoning rules and not have any residential property. You've, to my surprise, have come and said, "I want that." And it makes sense why you want that. I would say if you want, you could also tell us, let's look at the rules. You're interested in having a residential property on that. We said you need it, so it would be kind of hypocritical to say zero. What if you only want one, right? Is that something that's going to make it better for Yountville, for the neighbors, for the whole property? Look at that as an option. I'm sure your architect is very creative. And I, I just look at those different pieces. It's a, it's an ugly process that is painful and has ended up of how this town is the way it is. And when, when we go through it, it's really not that fun, but overall, it probably is better than all the other solutions. So, I also agree, we always chuckle when somebody says a basement, but we have seen it work, and if I looked at this property, knowing how small it is, and you're a businessman, if I can add 1,000 square feet underneath, heck, I'd do that. So, I would at least take a look and have one person come out for their $500 an hour and dig a hole, and just see what happens, because I think it might be worth your time.
Thanks. And thanks, everybody, for your comments. I will make a few more comments, not trying to rehash what has been said, and I think it's fairly evident that we're not looking at a decisive conclusion this evening, and we'll get to that in a moment. But one of the points that's in the conclusion of the staff report that, that I continue to struggle with is the finding about, "Development will not impair or interfere with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity." And I think that's kind of the crux of our dilemma here. There was very little, if any, negative comment about the architectural style of this building from the neighbors, from the zoning and design review board members, from the council, from the public. There is an eclectic mix of style that we embrace in Yountville and throughout the valley. And I know, I think it was, Councilmember Dornbecker has brought up the example before about Opus One being across the street from Mondavi Winery, two very different, but very iconic pieces of our community. So, that alone, I have absolutely no problem with. I encourage it. I think it's very inventive, creative. It really is a statement building, which is clearly your intention to stand out. You don't want to be a cookie-cutter building that people can miss walking by. You're making a statement. I have absolutely no problem, and I encourage that. Some of the pieces of this application that we've either not touched on at all, or just in a cursory manner, the fact that you're proactively putting solar panels up there, I totally support that idea. Hopefully, more of our development will be in that direction. As to the vice mayor's comment, I totally agree. We're normally fighting with people to maintain housing units. Usually, rezonings are to skirt the conditions, and here, you're actually complying and aggressively complying with those, so I commend you for that as well. For me, it really comes down to having that potential negative impact on the neighbors to the north versus the options that we can pursue, moving the building to the south. The two conditions I see is, the necessary direction is either to significantly reduce the building height, if it's in the north location, or relocating the building to the south part of the parcel. I have no problem with everything about the building, the height, the mechanical on the roof, I think, is much better than burying it underground or putting it on, on the surface. I guess I'm a pessimist about digging that hole in the ground and seeing what bubbles up. Certainly, it's an option to consider. We don't know that this water table is as high every single parcel as it is in some. It's at potential great time and expense, but that's a decision for you to make. It would afford you more options with your retail space and, and other conditions on this somewhat challenging parcel. I have no problem with encroaching into that front 15-foot setback, especially because we're not talking about a significant portion of the building mass, that we're more talking about entry elements. So, I don't think that that's really that much of a negative. I've already commented about the, the two housing units. That would be a deal breaker for me if you didn't include them. So, I'm glad that we're not needing to worry about that. Also, I want to acknowledge you are kind of challenging yourselves with the retail space, because you are probably hoping for more to use for your showcase area. But again, given the lot restrictions, you're making the most out of what you can. I still encourage, even though we're talking about a super-small space, as much landscaping as we can get around this building to soften the elements, I think that complements it really well, even if it is moved to the south side. I know one thing that kept coming up to me is, if people look at the Somersden Wine-Tasting Building, it appears to be a giant wall that's exposed to, to nothing, but we made a very conscious decision to allow that, knowing that there'd be a shared driveway with the parcel that's immediately to the north, and that they were going to have to work with that property owner to design on the north parcel something that complemented the existing Somersden. So, while there might appear to be precedent already along Washington Street, it really isn't under the same circumstances, and certainly is not up against residential property. We're also, on the other side of things, whether renting or owning, none of us are guaranteed the views that we enjoy today. Those of us that live on the agricultural side of our town know full well that years ago, it used to be less of, you know, uninterrupted vineyard land, that we now see development. And whether it's, you know, our, our development or others, that does happen. And we're, we try to preserve view corridors as much as we can here in town, especially, because we can't control it outside of town. This does seem like it's an unfair burden on the adjacent property owners to the north to have the building as it's presented impacting them. I'm not convinced of the total impact on the shade. I think it might be more severe than is being presented in the application, but given staff's support of, of the, the shadow, shade drawings, I'm not going to make that a deal breaker. But it does seem like the massing itself is just inappropriate that close to residential property. So, just again, to kind of summarize, and we haven't even talked about things like hours of operation, or any of the other details, signage, lighting, we have to get to all that eventually. We have a couple really significant issues to address first. So, my recommendations, if the north side is really the most critical issue, we need to get even more creative about how to bring some of that massing down. And if the south side is palatable for you, I think you maintain and retain a lot of, or entirely, what you've already designed. We just then need to work with staff to get creative about how it fits in that space. So, unless I'm completely misreading council's position, and I welcome anyone to offer up a motion, we were given the options of either approving as presented, denying the application as presented. We can provide direction for a redesign and hear that on a future date. And I think the best option for all considered in terms of schedule and time would be to have a motion to continue this hearing, as opposed to denying, because I just, I'm not hearing approval as presented.
Move to continue the hearing.
So...
I'll second.
Before we vote on that motion, what I'd like to find out from staff with potentially a nod from the applicant, is how much time staff thinks might be needed, or the applicant thinks might be needed, before we commit a date certain to...
We don't need to commit a date certain. We can continue to a date uncertain, and that'll be...
Mutually agreed upon by the applicant and staff as discussions continue.
Will we notice the hearing?
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest, because if you are referring it back to staff, which it sounds like what, that's the pleasure of the council, and if there are significant design elements that are going to be different, I would suggest you conduct another public hearing. And of course, staff does have the direction that we were looking for from the, from the council, as far as addressing some of the concerns that have been previously raised. So, it would be to continue, what you could do is continue the matter to a date not specified, refer the matter back to staff, and to bring this matter back to your consideration after those design issues have been addressed.
And my understanding is that is how the motion was...
Intended.
Intended. So, with that, we are, the vote is to continue this hearing to a future date, have staff work with the applicant on, you've certainly heard plenty of comments from the neighbors, the public, and us on what our concerns are. So, with that, would you like a, do we need a roll call vote here, do you think, or can we just have a...
You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor of continuing this hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
That's pretty much a roll call vote with unanimous, unanimous approval. So, thank you. I think you're hearing a lot of very positive comments from the public and the council, but that we do need to still work on some of the design features. So, good luck to you and to staff to come up with a great project. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know that was a long one. And as people are kind of heading out, we'll, we'll just take a three-minute, three-minute Council meeting, we are waiting for Councilmember Hall, so as we are waiting for him to come back down the hallway, I will move on to item 16A, strategic plan update. We are receiving and filing this update. Is there any staff report?
Yes. Mayor, council, tonight, staff is very pleased to present, and we're not going to go in any great detail, but what I do want to point out is, we want some feedback. As you may recall, the council adopted a five-year, 2011-16 strategic plan. And while we don't often talk about this, it is an important element in all of your council reports where we talk about the tie-in. What's also important is that in adopting that particular program, we committed, as both the council and the staff, to a periodic review and status report where we would let you know what's going on. So, we're very pleased you have about a 16-page detailed report with bullet formats and various things. What's important to staff is, one, if you've got questions about the progress of certain initiatives or where we're going, please get back to me so I can communicate with you. We will be posting this online so that the community and others can chat with us. It's really important to note that you're going to see a checkmark, which means completed. You'll see a dot, which generally means it's ongoing, and in some cases, an initiative was completed but has ongoing components that need to be updated. A good example is, we've launched a new website, but part of our initiative and part of our outreach is to always keep our content fresh and to be adding more and more. So, it's not one that's just done and checked off the list. Some of them are. You're going to see a, kind of an arrow, which indicates a, a project or an initiative that has some challenge to it. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's not started, but that it has implications and is not necessarily where we would like it. And then, you'll also see an occasional where a project initiative may not be making the progress to date that we would have liked to achieve. So, we're reporting all of that to you so that it's not a surprise and that we will, again, periodically review. You'll see the, the next major comprehensive update like this will be done in August, just after we finish the planning for the next year's budget. So, again, I know the hour is late, but I do, this is, you know, it's easy to gloss over in a meeting, but it's very significant, because this is where we're buying into and how we're tracking and monitoring the core work that's going to implement the council's strategic plan.
And I just would reiterate that this has been a joint effort with council direction, staff, and community involvement, which really helps craft a very thorough report. So, are there any specific questions or comments of the council? Councilmember Mueller?
I have a bit of a blended comment as it relates to the strategic plan, this being January, and the tradition of having a retreat, which is really a way of communicating with the town where we're going this year and what our plans are. There are certainly things about our retreats in the past that I don't think were very productive in getting, and one is, you know, spending a lot of money for someone who's going to come in and facilitate all this. I've never felt that we really did a great job of that. But it really comes down to kind of communication, and maybe, you know, it is some way of communicating this strategic plan and letting everybody know, because, you know, it's year after year, like, when do we do this, and what do we really have? So, maybe an item to discuss later. I don't want to totally dismiss having a retreat, by that, you know, the council getting together with the community in some way, and having communication as it relates to the strategic plan, maybe just, you know, where we're going with this, and that it really has been approved, you know, and getting some more input, but with the primary goal of communication and interaction, so...
I think we have had substantial community participation to date, so it's, it's good that we have a lot of that feedback already built into the plan. that we have a lot of that feedback already built into the plan. But I think staff and the council both will support continuing to have that dialogue as we keep moving forward. Any other comments?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I just wanted to commend you. I read through it line by line, and I was very impressed with the, the progress that you're able to track through it. So, I don't have any questions about it at this time. I might, as we go along, but I think that it might even be worthy of a, a community, so all those people who did participate could come back and see some of the results of their participation as well, because I thought it was very impressive.
And we'll certainly use this as a guide as we're talking about the next budget cycle and what we're reviewing as our priorities. So, if no other comments, I'll move on to 16B, Parks and Community Services Commission Appointments. I know we did interview, and I won't steal the thunder of the town clerk, but...
Nope, that's fine.
Please go ahead with your report on our interviews earlier for the Parks and Community Services Commission positions.
In the interest of time, I will be brief. The town has recruited for three regular member positions and one high school non-voting member, and we received three applications for the voting members, and those applications were received from Jeffrey Durham, Susan Weikers, and Edwin Oviet. We did not receive an application from the high school non-voting member, so that recruitment will remain open. Council interviewed those, excuse me, those applicants earlier this evening and have submitted their vote tallies, and all are being recommended for appointment. So, staff would ask that council make a motion to appoint those three members mentioned with the term of office to expire January 2014, if there are no further questions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to Susan, Ed, and Jeff for, in some cases, stepping back up to continue serving, but all three very strong candidates tonight. So, I think we were, we were in total agreement that they're going to be a great addition to Parks and Community Services. So, thank you very much. And our town clerk is going to stay up with our next report about reviewing our existing committee and commission assignments, and also discussing the possibility of adding a member to the newly created Napa County Gang and Youth Violence Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a roster of the town council's appointments to regional boards and commissions, and typically most of the changes occur after election, but this is just an opportunity to reaffirm the current appointments, send out notices to those county agencies, so to know that you're still continuing to serve, and to make any changes if you think there are any needed changes. The biggest changes, like the mayor said, is the Board of Supervisors created the Napa County Gang and Youth Violence Commission, and is asking that the town of Yountville appoint one representative and/or an authorized designee. In talking with my fellow clerks in the county, two of the cities have made those appointments already. The city of Calistoga appointed a council member and a police chief, and the city of Napa appointed the mayor and police chief, and I haven't heard from the other cities at this time. So, that is the only actual appointment that I would be requesting that the council make tonight unless there's a need for other changes. And then attached to the staff report is the, the current roster with the highlighted vacancy for the Gang and Youth Violence, the Board of Supervisors staff report creating the commission, and also the commission's bylaws, talking about that. And a brief purpose and meeting dates are included in the staff report, just for quick reference. Then there's also a brief overview of the various countywide boards that give a detail for the public to understand what, what other bodies the council serves on representing Yountville, and then also the Town Council Protocol Section regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, first I'll ask if there are any needs or concerns, desires, to potentially change any of our existing appointments. Seeing none, then let's move straight to the issue of a representative for the Napa County Gang and Youth Violence Commission. It meets quarterly, and times and dates to be determined, and different cities throughout the valley will host, other than Yountville, it looks like.
And the first, the first meeting is Wednesday, February 15th, 2012, at the Calistoga Community Center.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Marita Dornbecker for that, if she has an interest, since she's kind of short on some of the other commissions and time.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry to say, I'd be happy to trade a nomination. I'm, I'm the survivor of a sexual assault, and I cannot, I really couldn't. I'm sorry. I can't, I can't deal with violence. I really can't.
Okay. Are there any other volunteers that would be willing to step forward?
I'd be happy to trade and take one, you know, from someone else so that they could step up.
To alleviate another meeting? Is there anyone that's in a position to be able to take on another meeting, or...
It's quarterly?
It meets, yeah, four times a year.
I could, I mean, I'm happy to volunteer to, to be the representative for Yountville.
So, Councilmember Mueller, would you potentially amend your motion?
Can I amend my new motion?
Or start a new one?
Yes, I can start a new one.
There was no second to the original.
There was no second. I could...
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to recommend Councilmember Hall for this new commission?
Give me a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, for stepping forward on that.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'd like to recommend with your consideration that the authorized designee position, I consult with the sheriff and have somebody from the sheriff's department serve in that capacity. Not necessarily one of our designated deputies, but given our relationship with Napa County Sheriff's Office and our contract, it may be more appropriate for us to have some law enforcement interaction in that second seat.
Fair enough. So, do we need a motion for that, or can we just pursue that? Do we know?
I would prefer you have a motion providing that direction, and then I can work with the sheriff to designate that.
Is there a motion to pursue our public safety officers to fill that second position?
I'm just concerned about taking more police time off our own personal streets. I guess my question before I really go with that position is how many safety officers are already on the board, and do we really need to contribute our time?
Well, I can't imagine we would be taking somebody off patrol to go to this meeting, so it would soon be voluntary basis of somebody off duty.
And I also want to point out that it may not be necessarily one of our four designated officers from the county. It's just that if the other agencies are establishing a law enforcement balancing presence, that's who represents law enforcement in our community.
Basically, those are the experts that we're going to be sharing in the conversation.
Otherwise, we would need to probably look at education or somebody like that, and we'd need a little more time.
The sheriff has a specified seat on this commission and/or their designee, so maybe coordinate with them to make sure they have the Yountville hat on when they're attending in addition.
Yeah, so we, we do still want to have an influence and not just give another municipality an additional representative.
Right.
So, is there a motion to provide staff with that direction to contact our sheriff's department about...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A dedicated, Yountville-focused representative. Still works for you?
I understand.
Thank you. We're finished with that item, I believe. Moving on to staff informational reports. Do we have, I see Graham leaning, leaning forward. Tell us some good things about our sidewalks.
Okay. Our sidewalk and traffic calming project is moving well. We've been lucky with the weather, not so lucky with the supplier of tree grates. So, the tree grates in front of Whistle Stop have been holding up the project, but as long as we don't have rain tomorrow, they should be pouring that sidewalk, and we can move forward with that. Because of the rain forecast this week and in the next week, they'll be holding off and delaying the demolition and reconstruction of the sidewalk along the west side of Washington between Hopper Creek and Burgundy Way. So, once the weather, once we get a week of good weather, then they'll demolish that area and reconstruct, and construct that. And that should be the end of it. On our Parks Path Project, the contractors demolished the path out at Vineyard Park. They will start to do the forming, and we'll have to play around with the weather until when they can pour that. We anticipate two weeks there, and then another two weeks at Veterans Memorial Park. Again, we'll have to work around the weather, but those two projects are moving forward.
Tennis court, any schedule?
Tennis court, we need a week of 70-degree weather, and we have not had that, and probably won't have it for a few months the way things are going. So, we're looking at doing some work there, but we talked to the contractor, we'd just like to do the whole project and all, all parts of that project at one time, so, so we're not affecting the tennis courts twice, we'll just do it once. So, probably May, we may be able to do that project.
That's when it's going to be raining all the time.
Right.
Any other staff reports? Informational? No? Moving on to council meeting reports. Do we have specific meeting reports that we need to hear from? At this time, we have on the list, let's just, if I could, I guess we'll just go on the list. 18A, NCTPA. Vice Mayor? Okay. I was there, and Councilmember Dornbecker was there, and I think we both have the, I mean, Mueller, sorry. I'll keep doing that every now and then, I'm sorry. I think we both have the same information here. One of the larger presentations was about the Napa County Bicycle Plan, and they provided city and town-specific excerpts. There is a Yountville bicycle plan. I'm not sure why the photo is not of our Yountville bicycle pathway, but we're going to work on that with them. That's going to be the first order of, first edit. But it's, it's a very all-encompassing plan. They have specific bike routes designated, some needing to be developed, some just needing to be striped. Councilmember Mueller, did you want to add any additional comments about the, the bike plan?
No, I have some other comments.
About the NCTPA meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Just to kind of, it was a quick little rehash that I thought I would share about what was accomplished in 2011 and future projects for 2012. So, briefly, as Mayor Dunbar talked about, the, the bike plan has started, especially with the mile in Yountville. There's new bus route was going from Napa over to Sonoma, and that will be all completed, that plan, in 2012. The Regional Transit Center revenues were put together for that. All the up-valley cities put all their new bus shelters in. We have all of ours here in town. And there was a, they received a $2.5 million federal grant for the bike trail and a $2.7 million federal grant for the buses. And quickly for 2012, we anticipate the completion of the city of Napa. We'll serve the whole community, the Transit Center. We're retiring a lot of old buses, and then there's the new buses. Also, the biggest thing, and I think for a lot of people, is we're going to be starting the widening of Jameson Canyon. So, get your GPS going and find some alternate routes. They said maybe in a month or two, they're going to start cutting down trees, and as soon as that happens, we're going to probably start seeing the work. And also, NCTPA is in charge and has been doing a lot of discussion with the regional housing. I think that's not final, and there's going to be an upgrade to their website.
Couple more items from that meeting. There, they announced that Clipper Cards that have been prominent throughout other Bay Area transit systems as a form of ridership purchasing with these Clipper Cards, they are coming to Napa County and Solano County. They're going to be tested in the fall of 2012 with a rollout expected in March of 2013. So, you will literally be able to use your Clipper Cards to get anywhere in the Bay Area using the transit systems, because they will be completely integrated. There was also an extensive presentation from the investors in the wine train purchase. They presented a light rail service option that they are pursuing that would run from St. Helena to Vallejo on the existing wine train tracks. There would be substantial upgrading of the tracks. This is a $100 to $200 million project, so they are looking at a lot of federal money to move forward, but this would basically connect Valley-wide, and if they are able to work with Union Pacific Railway, which owns from Napa through American Canyon down to Vallejo, there may even be a connection to the Vallejo Ferry System. So, much more to do, more to come with that. And also, our representative, Robin Baldwin, was appointed to the Napa County Cultural Arts Commission. So, or that was, she was the latest addition to that commission. We, she was an at-large, that's right, I was hoping it was going to be our representative. We still don't have a representative on that, but she was an at-large appointment. I know.
Thank you for clarifying.
The town manager, no, we didn't fill that seat. It's just wishful thinking on my part. Let's see if I, we covered everything with the NCTPA. Let's go to Watershed Information System and Conservancy?
We did not have a meeting last month. I believe this next meeting is scheduled for the 26th of January.
All right. A couple others that I did want to touch on. At the Napa County City Selection Committee, I took over as chair, and we then elected Napa Mayor Jill Tekel to represent Napa County on the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission with the Association of Bay Area Governments. I was also at the flood control meeting where Supervisor Bill Dodd was elected the new chair, and Napa Mayor Tekel was elected vice chair. Also, let's get to the Napa County League of Governments, where many of us were in attendance. We did hear a presentation from Paul Price, Executive Director of the NCTPA, on a potential transportation sales tax initiative coming up this year. It's under consideration. Any other comments about the NICLOG meeting from those that were present? Nope, moving right on. Also, in case people didn't hear, at the beginning of our meeting, the California Veterans Home Allied Council is in election season already. They are electing a new executive team, chair, vice chair, and I believe delegate at large. By our, their next meeting in February, there will be announcements about that election. So, to be continued there, and I'm sure we'll be reading about it in the Yountville Sun, and we'll hear about it at our next council meeting, where the Allied Council will be on the agenda. Are there any other meetings or comments that the council would like? We have just a couple more minutes before...
Need a motion to continue?
No, we're going to make it.
Any specific comments? Vice Mayor, Congress?
I have one as well. I was going to, ironically, Robin Baldwin does work in Yountville, so maybe that's, that's what it came from. Just one quick note, this Thursday, January 19th, the Napa Valley Unified School Board is having its, one of its regular meetings, and on the agenda, I just read it today and read the staff report, is the staff recommendation to add sixth grade at Yountville Elementary. I may want to say restore sixth grade. Yountville Elementary had sixth grade for decades until about, I think, five or six years ago. So, that recommendation by Superintendent Sweeney and the rest of district staff is a, I don't want to be overly, it's monumental for the future of the school. So, it's really great that that's, that is going to occur. They did do some polling of all the students, the parents at the school of who is looking for the current fifth-grade class, do they want to go to a different middle school, would they like to stay at Yountville, looking all the way down to kindergarten and see where that, that pipeline is. So, obviously, that, I haven't seen the results of that, but obviously, that must have come out good enough for their satisfaction. So, if you do support that, I am fine with anybody sending a, or would encourage anybody to send an email to any of the board members, and you can find it on the NVUSD website, just to express support before that, although I don't know a reason that would not pass, but it's always good not to assume. So, anyway, I, we'll, I'll have a report on that next time, but that's pretty, pretty important.
And keeping the theme, the Yountville Elementary School is having a pasta feed coming up?
The pasta feed is on, on this Friday. At 6:00 PM is the annual pasta feed that is sponsored by Ranch Market. All of the money that is raised at that event goes to benefit the school. Money is going to the Yountville School Foundation, which has been working tirelessly with the community to keep the school open, and also, the teachers will do their regular auction of their own baked goods items, which specifically goes to buying supplies for the classrooms. So, that is this Friday. You can buy tickets either at the, the school office during normal office hours or at Ranch Market. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
Or at the door?
Or at the door. Yep.
Councilmember Hall?
Just one comment, and it was mentioned earlier by Mike Parks with regards to the family that had the fire in Napa. They have four children that go to school at Yountville Elementary. I realized that when my daughter brought home her package... I realized that when my daughter brought home her packet today, that one of those children was in her classroom, and so there's going to be a very significant need for pretty much everything. I think pretty much everything was lost in the fire, so those, anything and everything that may be available, certainly you can connect with Yountville Elementary School and the office. They'll, they're putting together a list of things that this family is going to need, so just bear that in mind as we all kind of look out into the next couple weeks. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other final comments from the council? If not, we'll just take a quick look at future agenda items. They're listed there, and we will move on to item 20, which is adjournment to our next regularly scheduled meeting of February 7 at 6:00 PM. It feels like we haven't had a 6:00 PM regular council meeting in two months.
Move to adjourn to February the 6 council meeting.
February 7 at 6.
7, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.